Okay, we are ready with the planning board meeting of June 9th, 2022. As far as preliminary matters are concerned, we have a resolution to adopt. Could I get a motion to approve the resolution for 8015 old Georgetown roadside plan amendment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Opposed?
I wasn't here for the idea.
Okay, that's three to zero to one. How about the minutes from May 19th to May 25th? Are you gonna have to abstain on one of those, Carol?
No.
No, you were there for both those.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Regulatory extension request for Jerome Freebomb lot for administrative subdivision.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? That is approved, and now it's time for park director's report.
Good morning, planning board. Mike Riley here. I just lost my notes. One second, please. There we go. So, as you know, June is Pride Month, and the commission, Park and Planning, has a whole slate of great activities to celebrate Pride Month. I just want to highlight two. Yesterday, our own Carl Morgan hosted a panel called "No Way to Be LGBTQIA+." As usual, Carl did an excellent job. We had four individuals on the panel and a great crowd in the auditorium and online to hear about their lives, and it was very, very eye-opening. And another event of many I will highlight because it is today. As you know, we have a whole bunch of park activation events going on every month, and tonight we have Pride in the Park, an LGBTQ comedy show at Fairview Road Urban Park in Silver Spring, which is right across from our old headquarters. And we filled up that park last month for an event called Acoustics Nails, and it's gonna be a beautiful night tonight, and I expect to have a good crowd there. It's improbable comedy doing the show, and we expect it to be a great show. I want to switch to some awards we won. We won seven communicator awards for creative excellence in digital video design and print communications. There were over 4,000 entries, so winning seven awards was pretty impressive. We won two awards of excellence, which is the highest honor you can get. That was for our website, montgomeryparks.org. One award of excellence for digital websites, local government. And our winter bingo program won an excellence award for online advertising and marketing. And then there were five awards of distinction: Josiah Hansen Museum Park and Virtual Tour, Brookside Gardens Interactive Map, Our Nature on Wheels, Be Smart, Do Your Part, and Discover Your Happy Place. So congratulations to our Public Affairs Community Partnerships Division, Kristy Williams and her team. They do great work to promote our parks and promote our events, and it was recognized in these awards. Just to give you an idea of some of their competitors: Forbes, Walt Disney Company, Mattel, State Farm, Phillips, T-Mobile, Pepsi. So this is not without lack of people who have very talented marketing professionals in their cadre, so congratulations to them. And then the last thing I want to do today is give a heads-up on something that you may hear about in the coming days. It's about our Open Parkways program. As you know, at the onset of the pandemic, we opened seven miles of our park roads on the weekends for pedestrians, cyclists, families. Opened to people, closed to cars, and it was very successful. We've had hundreds of thousands of users on each of those three roads since the pandemic started. On Sligo and Beach, we've had just a few minor reports of inconvenience from the closed roadways, from, you know, issues created by the roadway being closed to motorists. We've been able to address them without much ado. Little Falls Parkway has been a little different. Over the last year, we've heard of growing complaints about both cut-through traffic in neighborhoods on the weekend and extended travel times as people are unable to use Little Falls Parkway. So we've been looking at it very carefully, working with county DOT, with our own traffic consultant. We've been out there doing traffic studies and counts and looking at any solutions that we could come up with. And between our team and DOT, we have an idea that we think is a great idea, but it needs to be checked out, and that idea is to convert one side of Little Falls Parkway, one of the two-lane sides, to a permanent roadway, open 24/7 to vehicles, one lane each way, and then to convert the other two-lane segment to a linear park. So we started doing traffic studies to see if this could work. Our traffic studies were showing that it could. We previewed this idea with some of the community members and councilmember Freedson's office, and the truth is that our idea was met with a little bit of skepticism about whether it could work from a traffic perspective and really solve the problem. So we've circled back, and what we want to do is we want to do a real test of this scenario, a real onsite test, to determine if it can work from the traffic perspective. So what we're planning to do after this weekend is to temporarily suspend the open parkway on Little Falls and convert traffic to one lane in each direction on a section of that road, and then do the traffic observations to see what's going on out there, to see if it works. And if it does, as we suspect it will, we'll run this test through the summer, make modifications as needed if we have any type of issues at intersections or any type of issues with backups. And if it does work, what we hope to be able to do is to implement our first permanent open parkway ultimately. And by that, I mean, we would have one of the two-lane segments of Little Falls Parkway being open to traffic 24/7, no weekend closures. And the other section would be a linear park unlike anything we have in our park system today. It'd be a very wide linear park that would accommodate both pedestrian and bicycle use, and it would also be amenitized with things that would make it a destination, a place where people want to be, and it would be a great place for community festivals and things like that. So again, we're planning on putting out a press release today about this test period that we're going to enter into in the summer. We expect we'll have a lot of questions. We're developing an FAQ sheet about what we're doing here. And we will obviously, as we progress through our test phase, we will also begin going into public engagement about what this ultimate configuration would look like, because it may not be easy for people to visualize what that could be down the road, and we'll have our design team working on that so that we can have public meetings and really discuss what we're hoping the ultimate solution could be. But I see it, I hope we can do it. I think it's a total win-win from both the perspective of people who are reporting inconvenience from the road being closed to traffic. That wouldn't happen anymore. It would be open 24/7, and I think we could create an open parkway experience, a linear park unlike anything we have in the system that would be an amenity, just like the Capitol Crescent Trail is an amenity that people cite when they talk about selling their homes and things like that. So I'd be happy to take any questions on that, but a press release will go out likely later today or tomorrow. The parkway will operate as it has been this weekend coming, this Saturday and Sunday. It will be open for people, but that would be the last weekend before we go into the test phase next week. During the week, our traffic contractor would be putting in flexi-posts to convert the segment to one lane each way. It would remain open to traffic with traffic control, so we're not closing it at any point in time, and then we would go right into the test phase for the rest of the summer.
So, Mr. Riley, how long is the test phase gonna run? Because it should run so that you are testing while school's in session. It's not gonna be in session right now.
Absolutely. We at a minimum have to go into September.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Were you done? I didn't mean to cut you off.
I am done. Thank you.
Actually, I have a question, just generally. You didn't raise, and I had heard through previous conversations with Vice Chair Verma, who's been involved in this, but I don't know what this current status is, and perhaps you can talk about it a little more. But my understanding is that there's a group of National Cricket League that is looking for some sites to deal with, to potentially put in this region an arena and a facility that is similar to maybe the soccerplex, but more for cricket that can be used more than just, we're not talking about a single field, we're talking about a facility, and that they are looking for land, but then they have the funding to actually put it together and operate it, as they say, similar to the soccerplex. And cricket is like the second most popular sport in the world behind soccer or football, European football. So I'd like to ask what we're doing in terms of trying to locate some potential sites for that.
So I did engage a team within the department to scour our inventory for sites that may have potential. It's being led by our real estate office, who obviously knows the land holdings we have and our park planning group. And we met and discussed criteria like acreage, transportation, proximity, geographic location, proximity to neighborhoods and things like that, and they're working on a report back to me. I don't have it yet. I hope to have it very shortly so that we can see whether there's anything out there that works. We haven't had a really, really big public-private partnership in a while like the soccerplex, but we do have experience, you know, with how we go about figuring this out, and I just, I think it's a very, very exciting opportunity, but the last thing I want to do is promote a site that is doomed from the beginning, so I just want to do a little due diligence upfront to see if there is anything out there with potential. Right now, we have eight cricket venues in the park system. Most of them are converted baseball softball diamonds. We have the first purpose-built field out at Germantown, at South Germantown, with the second field coming in the six-year CIP in the next few years. But I But I understand this group is looking for something that is a stadium that could accommodate a substantial number of people. And that kind of drives the criteria that we're looking at in our site selection process.
And the other thing is we might want to bring in the council as well, because number one, I think it's an economic development opportunity. But the other reason is that it's an opportunity. For example, it has the potential that if they are going to pay for, you know, if this outside partner would pay for the construction of an arena, I know that the county's been looking for something for, you know, for graduations and other uses. And it would be a great opportunity to combine that and have it paid for, and we could provide the land. So I don't know what their, and maybe Vice Chair Verma, if you know what the specifics are that they're looking for. I'm assuming you've given those parameters to the Parks Team.
Yes. So they're looking primarily for an eight-to-10,000-person arena. And I think Director Riley, you and I spoke about this. I'm also fielding the inquiry with just folks who have private land in the county to see if it can work. But Commissioner Rubin, you are correct. I mean, there's an opportunity to use it for concert venues, for graduations, for festivals. And I think it is a unique opportunity because it is from a very well-funded source. So it's definitely something very exciting.
And I'm sure you're thinking about this, but I would love it if we would try to identify at least one site on the East County and something that is very accessible. Because I think that that will enhance the ability to use it for other means.
I did. Just Commissioner Rubin, I just wanted to make sure you concluded your comments. Okay. Director, I had a question, actually not a question, it's a request. At last week's presentation regarding the burial site inventory for the county, there was a community comment regarding nine burial sites in the parks. In the future, would you come back and present to the board the location of those sites and what the current status is on those sites in terms of any type of marking, signage, and maintenance?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? If not, we can move on to item five, which is the work session for the Wheaton Regional Park Master Plan as soon as we can get another team's call going.
Okay, we are back with the Wheaton Regional Park Master Plan Work Session with Chuck Kynes, among others. Thank you for the record, Chuck Kynes, with Park Planning and Stewardship in Montgomery Parks.
Good morning. I am Hujong Garland, for the record, Park Planning Supervisor. Thank you so much today for the opportunity today to present about Wheaton Regional Park Master Plan. Today, we'll be sharing the public testimony received and seeking board approval. More than 250 people submitted written comments. So it demonstrated the outreach was very effective, and the public was very well-engaged. Also, it shows how much people really care about Wheaton Regional Park. So as a park planner, we definitely feel the responsibility. And hopefully, the commentary we're reflecting from the testimony is meeting board's intent and spirit. So without further ado, Chuck, take it away.
Great. Thank you, Hujong. The agenda for today's presentation is we're going to review the public testimony that the board received back on May 19th. The public record was open through 5:00 PM, May 27th. And as Hujong mentioned, we received over 250 written comments by the 5:00 PM deadline on May 27th. And then we also got comments from the county executive yesterday that we can also discuss. We're asking the board to confirm that staff correctly heard your prior comments and direction. We're asking the board to approve the staff recommendations and responses to the public testimony. And we're asking the board to approve or edit recommended new plan language where needed. Just as a reminder, how we've organized the plan into different park activity areas, as you can see here. So when we refer to different areas of the park, this is what we are referring to. The public testimony can be primarily divided into seven major themes. There were comments, other comments that had fewer responses that you can see below, where I've put them as support for or concerns about. But for today's work session, I'm primarily focusing on one through seven. And I'm going to walk the board through each of the issues, the current plan recommendation, what we heard from the public, what staff thinks about the issue, and then our recommended course of action.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kynes, do you want us to talk about, do you want board reaction after each of the seven top themes? Or would you like it at the very end?
After each one, I think would be most appropriate.
Okay.
Before we get started, I want to note some corrections that were requested by people who submitted comments in the last week, people who looked at the attachment that was associated with the staff report and said, you know, you missed some things, so can you correct them? So the first thing I want to correct is that the comments presented by the neighbors of the Northwest Branch were fully endorsed by the Friends of Sligo Creek, the Audubon Natural Society, Anacostia River Keeper, and the Anacostia Watershed Community Advisory Committee. They were signees at the bottom of the letter that I missed, and they wanted to make sure that that was noted for the public record. As I already mentioned, we also received comments from the county executive yesterday, mostly just endorsing the comments and recommendations of the neighbors of the Northwest Branch. And finally, Ms. Suzanne Jackson, number 15, on page four of the attachment, asked us to clarify that her comments were submitted on behalf of the Springbrook Forest Citizens Association. I had noted in the table that she had testified as an individual, which was incorrect. So I'm going to start with tennis and pickleball courts. The current plan recommendation is to convert three of the outdoor tennis courts at the Rubini Athletic Complex to eight, maybe 10, pickleball courts, depending on what we can fit. This was primarily the largest number of people who submitted comments. 68% of the total testimony was related to this topic. 179 comments were in favor of the dedicated pickleball courts, and 10 were opposing the conversion of the tennis courts. Our analysis is that pickleball remains the fastest-growing sport in the U.S., two years running, maybe three. While we have worked hard over the last couple of years to provide more shared tennis and pickleball courts around the county, we still only have two locations with dedicated courts at Bauer Drive and Seven Locks, although we are, there are some in the queue. We will be delivering more in 2023 and 2024. Converting tennis courts to pickleball courts is the most cost-effective way for us to deliver more dedicated pickleball courts as opposed to building purpose-built courts. Lighted pickleball courts are in the highest demand. People who want to play after work is primarily the highest demand for new facilities. There are many public tennis courts. Despite what testimony we received, our analysis shows that there are many public tennis courts nearby to Wheaton Regional Park, both parks and schools. Within just one or two miles, there are more than 40 courts, public tennis courts, parks and schools. The outdoor tennis courts at Wheaton are lit and not near existing homes and have the potential to avoid, you know, potential noise complaints from neighbors because the distance from homes is pretty far. So our recommendation is to retain the current plan recommendation to convert the three tennis courts to pickleball courts.
Mr. Kynes, in your analysis, you mentioned that the conversion is cost-effective. What's the cost compared to making the existing courts, tennis courts, a shared pickleball tennis?
My frame of reference would be the Bauer Drive, where we converted two tennis courts to six pickleball courts. That was about $25,000. To build one purpose-built pickleball court using new grading, new pavement, new facilities, new fencing would probably be that much just for one, would be my estimate. So the advantage of using existing tennis nets is you have the existing fencing around the tennis courts. You have the existing substructure, the pavement, the overlay. You know, everything is ready for the conversion because the surface used for pickleball is identical to the surface used for tennis. There is no difference other than the court configuration and the striping.
I think my question may, let me restate the question because I'm looking at bullet point number two regarding the shared tennis-pickleball court. And then your third bullet point regarding the conversion is cost-effective. And my question is regarding, what is the cost for a shared tennis-pickleball court versus the conversion that you're talking about?
Oh, I see what you're saying. The striping for, the cost to add striping to an existing tennis court to make it shared pickleball and tennis is about $1,000. And that's materials and labor. The conversion, as I mentioned earlier, Bauer Drive converting the three courts to tennis, two tennis courts to six pickleball courts was about $25,000.
A few years ago, some of the tennis folks showed up and were interested in seeing us look at the just service delivery plan for tennis across the county. I think that might be something that Park Planning might want to revisit. I think that might be something that Park Planning might want to revisit. I know you guys are sort of in a transitional period right now as far as, you know, staffing and your work program are concerned, but seems like it bears returning to that. But my recollection is when some of those people briefed CUP, I don't think they, I'm not sure they were, well, they did come to the planning board at one point, but I think the more extensive discussion was had at CUP. And my takeaway from that was, there's a lot of tennis courts in the county, probably more than enough to meet the existing total demand for playing tennis. However, there is, I think, a need slash demand for courts that are located together such that you can hold sort of informal or formal tournaments. And that seems to me to be something that we ought to be exploring is like, number one, what's the total capacity for tennis that's needed across the county and both? And is that satisfied with a combination of school sites that have, there's a ton of tennis courts at high schools, for example, and they really should be included in the count, not to mention private tennis facilities. But in addition to that, I think we, at some point, we need to sort of evaluate what's going on with tournament play, both the informal and formal kinds, to see, you know, what is the future of, you know, the Parks Department's role in providing adequate but not excessive amounts of capacity for, for, you know, tennis as well as pickleball. But I think that in this case, it's pretty clear, we need a lot more pickleball. I mean, I don't think anybody can seriously dispute that there is a lot of unmet demand for, for capacity to play pickleball. So at least as far as this is concerned right now, I would suggest we should go forward with this. But I do think there's sort of these broader questions about tennis.
Well, I, I agree. I mean, I, pickleball is huge. I, I have a property in Sea Colony West, which is one of the top 10 tennis communities in the country, and they've just converted, or we, because we've just converted a significant number of those tennis courts, even though it's a, holds regular tennis tournaments, to pickleball. In fact, they just built a new whole facility for pickleball, and I think that we need to meet the demand that we have here. So I mean, I, I go, I'm going to go along with staff's recommendation on the conversion of these courts, and I'm a tennis player, so, but I, I think there's a lot more tennis courts than people know about. So to piggyback on the Chair's comment, I would also ask if you haven't, that parks have on, you know, very clear documentation or, or, you know, a, some kind of a flyer or put it on the website where people can find, you know, when you're talking about what their, the tennis is, where they can find it. I mean, I have two tennis courts a block away from where I live in a park at Homewood, Capital View Homewood Park, and they're sporadically used. I mean, they're in great shape. That's where I play, and I don't often have to wait. So I think it's, it's, it's important for people to know where they can go as well as what the capacity is.
Yeah, Steph can answer a couple of questions. So actually, our park website itself is designed, when you type the particular facility, it gives the, actually, the particular facility's location within the county. So that's one of the sources we can definitely direct. And also, some of the website actually geographically locate, so it's much easier for users to look at it. So maybe we can advertise more about that site because it's a little bit hidden. So, and going back also Chair's comment about the tennis, we do have Olney Manor actually assigned for that kind of tournament quality or capacity. And our pros level of services shows that actually we do have extensive number of capacity for the tennis court. But Steph is definitely acknowledging that the tournament quality is different from the individual number of court, so potentially could it be explored as a subsequent of the pros? So we can comment on that. Thanks.
Yeah, and just to elaborate on Hojong's comment, when we were doing the pickleball site suitability, one of the locations that popped up was Olney Manor, and the feedback we got from park managers was no, this park is set aside for USTA tennis tournaments, so we're not converting any of the courts at Olney Manor. Or even putting overlays.
Right. And the other thing is we did have some complaints at Olney Manor, the existing pickleball going on there because it's, the ball is, some people find that sound of the ball clackety-clacking really irritating. And in fact, there's even somebody who works here who is, lives next door, who wasn't one of the people complaining, but was saying, yeah, it's, it's kind of annoying when it's like, you know, seven o'clock in the morning, and some people like to get out there and get their early pickleball in, and you've got people who live right next door hearing this clackety-clack as they're trying to sleep. So I think that actually underscores why this is a good idea because it's, it's hard to get locations for anything that are sufficiently far away from people's bedroom windows, whether it's a dog park or anything else that's, tends to be a little loud or, or at least in some people's view, irritating. So I think that's important to take advantage of that where you, where you can. Okay, hearing no dissent from that, what's next?
Okay, we're now going to move on to the Equestrian Center slash Wheaton Park Stables. The current plan recommendation is to retain the Equestrian Center in the short term and in the longer term, explore future uses and to provide new natural surface trails, however. This was the second largest number of people testifying and providing comments was the Equestrian Center. I don't have the actual number, I don't think in the, noted on the slide, but it was probably in the number of 30 to 40 comments were just for this topic. There's strong community support for the Wheaton Park Stables. It's considered a community landmark and focal point that's been around for 60 years. It offers affordable horseback riding opportunities in the Down County area as opposed to having people have to drive out to the rural, the ag reserve to experience equestrian facilities, and it's the only facility in the Down County that offers public horse riding on trails. It offers programs and employment for people with physical, emotional, and intellectual disabilities, and the comment that we heard most was the draft plan should more clearly define what we mean by short-term and long-term. So staff agrees that the stables offers valuable, offers valuable programs and services to the community, but we want to just point out to the board and to those listening that the Wheaton Park Stables is a private business operating on commissioned land. It's a public-private partnership. It leases the buildings and land from the commission. Wheaton Park Stables maintains all things equestrian. Anything related to the operations and programming for horse-based activities is maintained by Wheaton Park Stables. The commission maintains the building and infrastructure using property management funds of the operating budget. Michelle Grace is on the call today if you have any questions about the facility's management expertise on, on this topic. The facility is aging and will soon need to be renovated, but we need to know more about the actual cost for these improvements. So our recommendations is in the short term, retain Wheaton Park Stables while the current leasing wishes to operate. So as long as the current leasing wishes to continue to operate, it will remain Wheaton Park Stables. Following the park master plan approval, staff will conduct a more detailed study to assess the long-term economic sustainability of the stables, and that will include a quantitative analysis of facility use, the revenues and the costs, and identify potential funding strategies to make the needed improvements to bring the Wheaton Park Stables up to more acceptable standards.
Okay, I'm going to go for a while, so bear with me. I, if you can go back for a minute on the, the previous slide, okay, so where you have in a fourth bullet, offers programs and employment for people with physical, emotional, intellectual disabilities, that's something I don't want to be lost in the shuffle of what happens here. I visited the facility, I met with the staff, I met with the operator, and there's a lot of issues going on there. One of the things I'm going to quote from is, you know, we, we've, we have earned, Parks Department for, for the commission, both Montgomery and Prince George's, has earned copper awards for, you know, silver and gold level for six years. One of the requirements in that plan is a standard, is outreach to diverse underserved populations. It's actually 6.3.1. That reads, "The agency shall proactively extend programs and services to residents who may be underserved in the community to encourage participation in parks and recreation programs and services. Agencies shall identify and address barriers they may limit access, including physical, social, and mental abilities, and financial, geographic, and cultural barriers may be addressed through reduced fees and scholarships. Agencies should offer inclusionary support services to ensure access to programs and services for people of all abilities and socionomic status." I'd also like to read for a second from an article in the Washington Post talking about long-term COVID. As many as 61 million or one in four U.S. adults live with some form of disability. According to Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, those numbers are being bolstered by between 7 million and 23 million COVID long-haulers, including a million who can no longer work, according to recent government estimates. So with those ideas in mind and understanding what really goes on at the Wheaton Stables, I, I look at this in a different way. I think that the plan, first of all, needs to eliminate any discussion, including in the long-term review of future facilities, because if you're running a business and you want to sell your business, if you don't have absolute support from your landlord that you're going to be able to stay, then you're losing your goodwill, and you're not going to be able to raise funds. So we're almost, by having that language in the plan, we're almost, it's a self-fulfilling prophecy. So I don't, I want to take any language that doesn't support the continuation of the Wheaton Stables. And instead of talking about, you know, putting the burden on, completely on the stables because they are a nonprofit and they work with another nonprofit very closely called C, I think it's CPP, and yeah, CPP, and, and you have the testimony by Kim Khan, who was, who is the executive director. They have 22 intellectually and emotionally disabled adults who work there on a regular basis. I just showed up one day, and they are keeping that place running. And I think that the, really the direction, they're under lease, but that lease is on a month-to-month, and it has not been renewed since 2008. And I think that the Parks Department should be more focused on creating, helping them create a viable, if possible, because they're going to have to do some, a lot of the work for fundraising, but to help them get through how to put together a true public-private partnership. Because I do think that, given what's required in CAPRA, I think that we have an obligation to work with them and help this program continue, these programs continue. I talked to them about, because there was some discussion about the fact that they are also boarding privately. Of the 37 horses, seven, only seven are boarded, and clearly, they could increase the prices for that. Most of the people boarding are instructors, but I do think that that's important, and one of the issues is access. You know, CPP's been there for six years, and the reason that they're succeeding and growing in providing these services to that community is because it is accessible by people who could not otherwise reach the, a, an equestrian facility. They have trouble getting even metro access to go any, to any other equestrian facility throughout the county. So it's not just about the fact that it's on a bus loop, but, you know, there are at least two of the people who, of disabled adults, who actually take the bus and walk from Randolph Road. There are a number that get there by metro access or by, by some form of other, they don't have to always rely on a private ride. Most that, I would much rather see the nonprofit succeeding because people can get there on their own and don't have to set up a shuttle system, which is what they had to do at other, when they were operating at other equestrian facilities throughout the county. They just, you know, and, and it's prohibitive from both a timing perspective, a coordination perspective. I'd rather that they focus on assisting these adults that need, this community that needs assistance. And so I'm pretty adamant that I will not support anything in the plan that talks about looking at future uses on that site. I only wanted to talk about the support that we're going to provide through trying to structure a public-private partnership that works, and I think that we can figure out ways to do that with them, you know? And one of the things that was missing is, you indicate the, the facility's aging, we need to know more about the actual cost of these improvements, and I don't know how the, the department can come forward and suggest that perhaps some other use or that there can be done if they don't really know what the cost is. Because the cost of improvements could be equal to or less than what it would cost to repurpose that facility. I think that instead of, of looking at this as a, a burden on, on the, on the Parks Department and the commission, this should be looked at as a gem. We should hold it up as a facility that is meeting the, the requirements that we have to receive our gold medals, to help a community that is, is, is underserved. And I look at some of the programming in Prince George's County and their Parks Recreation, and they are, they are eating our lunch on serving the, on serving communities with disabilities. We need to, we need to, we need to up our game on this, and we've got something in place, and it's so much easier to build on that than it is to start over again. So I think that, that's, that's my direction I'm asking staff to go in. I also, and I think, believe that most of the, most of the area in the, one of the proposals was for multi-use trail, and that the only trail loop would, or trail available to just equestrians and pedestrians is around the facility, and that to me is, is just not enough. It doesn't give a, you know, through-the-woods trail experience to the users, and I think that that's, that's lacking, that would be lacking.
Carol?
I think-
Could we come back to that? I think that's going to be a separate.
Is that, okay. All right. But anyway, so you know what I feel about the stables, and I want to see that, that section rewritten that addresses it and holds up that, to give full support for the stables to continue.
I want to turn to other board members for their assessments, but I just want to ask you just to be clear. I don't take you to be saying that we should not be studying the economics of this and, and assessing the future financial impact to the park system of whatever capital improvements may be necessary.
Well, what I'm saying is that if there's a determination after a complete assessment and has been done and, and some, you know, some really good roll-up-your-sleeves work to assist or at least help guide the Wheaton Stable operator as a public-private partnership for even negotiations, and if for some reason that doesn't work in the next, I mean, we can give it a timeframe, you know, three years, three to five years, whatever it takes to get it together, then bring the plan back for amendment. I don't want to see anything in there that doesn't show support because I think that will make it harder for, to make this successful. So that's kind of the direction I'm going in. I do want to see, I want to see a financial analysis, and I want to see how we can meet that, but I wanted to see how we can do it with a public-private partnership as opposed to a true public-private partnership, help them find the right people. I think that, that we owe it not only to them, but to this community, and it's part of what we're required to do to retain our gold medal. So I don't see why we would have any, provide any doubt that we're- So I don't see why we would have any, provide any doubt that we're a poor 100% behind the continued operations for now and in the future if we can make it work. So I'm not sure, I'd like to see what they're, what the Parks Department would propose as far as a full analysis, quantitative analysis. But I also, it talks about, the study would include quantitative analysis of facilities' revenues and costs and potential funding strategies, and one of those strategies should absolutely be assisting with the public-private partnership if possible.
Well, I, I guess the question, you don't have to answer this now, it's, it's not entirely rhetorical, but I just want to lay this out there before I turn to other board members. If you don't make it clear in this plan that there's an expectation that the facility has to be, I'm not going to say it has to be self-sustaining, I don't, parks facilities routinely require public subsidy, right? Now, there's a set of guidelines that the Parks Department has about how much subsidy to what kinds of things, and we can get into that, but I'm not saying it has to be a break-even or better proposition. However, if you don't make it clear in this plan, there's an expectation that the overall cost over time, meaning capital as well as operating, has to be, I'm searching for the right word, it's not, again, not that it has to be profitable for the park system or even revenue-neutral, but that there has to be some accounting for the, the capital needs as well as the operating needs. Otherwise, we wind up in a situation like where with Sligo Creek Golf Course, where on an operating basis, Sligo Creek Golf Course breaks even, no problem. But we also did a facilities assessment recently, we're showing, you know, $5, $10 million plus in capital improvement needs that are getting increasingly pressing. So my concern is, if you don't make it, make it clear in this plan, there's an expectation that the stables are going to have to contribute towards those capital needs, then we wind up, when the music stops, the Parks Department's going to, somebody's going to turn the Parks Department saying, "All the things you just did, this is a wonderful program, it supports people with disabilities, all the reasons that you laid out, you've got to now cough up whatever the, that number is." And while we don't have that number, my apprehension is if you don't create an expectation that's very clear in this plan, then contrary to what you said, there is more difficulty, not less, for them raising money. Because I think that if you're going to go to outside funders and say, you know, "You need to help us," they're going to say, "What's the problem?" And I think it's, it's actually helpful to them to make it clear on the record that there is an expectation they're going to have to maybe be responsible for at least some substantial share of those capital, whatever they may be.
Right, and I, I expect that. I, I think that what you're saying is correct. What I'm saying that needs to come out of the plan is to talk about the long-term use. I think I'd rather say what the, how the, the stable will succeed, how, what our expectation is for its success, and then stop there. I don't want to have any statement that talks about long-term looking at a different use. It's more about having the, it's talking about the success of the stables through a public-private partnership that economically would meet the requirements, and then be silent on any future reassessment of use. Because I think, granted, I hear what you're saying, it does have, they do have, to any public-private partnership we look at, does that. Even the, you know, I, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't put Sligo as a comparison, because Sligo is a completely different animal. It doesn't serve the same type of community, and there are other options. I just see it differently. It used to serve first tee, it doesn't do that anymore, that I'm aware of, and it's under a different situation. It's not technically a public-private partnership, it's just been leased to the Revenue Authority to operate. I look at it completely differently. But what I'm saying is, I don't want to create, I, I do think that you're right, if there is language in there that says that they have to have, you know, have some of their own, you know, that they are responsible as the, as our private partner, for example, for doing, you know, some of that fundraising, assisting with that, those, it's all going to shake out in the negotiation of a public-private partnership with them, but what I don't want to do is, I don't want to cast any implied doubt that we're not 100% behind these continued operations now and for the future if it works. But I don't want to look at different uses, because I think that's where you're, you know, you're coming up against a slippery slope. And I think, you know, so that's kind of the direction I want to go in, and I hope that staff understands-
Okay, well, let's come back to that, those three words, "if it works," but I want to get out of the way so other people can weigh in.
Commissioner Rubin, I, I concur with a lot of your points. When I initially heard the staff's presentation today, I had jotted down three things, and two of them are within our control, and the third is within the Wheaton Park Stables control. And the first is the current analysis as the leaseholder, what does it cost us currently to maintain the, that parcel? What do we see as long-term? And long-term being three, five years from now and beyond to maintain that property at, in a working state? I'm a little, not a little, I'm very concerned, and I think your point's well-taken, Commissioner Rubin, if we talk about other, other uses of the stables, it, it does tell the reader that this is not something that we're totally committed to, and if we're telling the lessee at the same time, "You need to go out and find funding," I think it's a bit contradictory. So we can, we, we can state in the document, in the plan, that there's an expectation, and what that expectation includes, that, and this is the third part, for the Wheaton Park Stables, as you indicate in this document, that they are responsible for all things equestrian, and part of that for them is fundraising. And there's multiple avenues, some through the county, others through other partnerships. We have no control over that, but we can certainly talk about the expectation for success. I, and I, when you, and looking at your analysis, I think we need to really spell out what it is that we as the, as the leaseholder, what the expectation is, and I know that there's been talk about the, the Sligo golf. I think of this more like the farmers, the farmers that use parkland and ag reserve, where we have, they are lessees and we are the leaseholder. There's an expectation. I'm not sure that talking about the facility is aging, if the facility is aging, what, what is life, what's the life expectancy of the facility currently? And I know you don't, you're not going into detail here, but I do think we do need to talk about that. On your next slide, you talk about the detailed study. Don't wait until the plan is final to start the detailed study. Start now, because that's part, that's got to be part of the discussion with Wheaton Park Stables in terms of what is the expectation for them. And I, Commissioner Rubin, I agree with you. If I were the executive director or a member of the board with Wheaton Park Stables, if I were out asking for funding and I knew that my leaseholder was saying, you know, "Your, your long-term presence is a wild card or a question mark," I might not invest. So, you know, I, I would ask you to go back and reconsider. I don't know if the language needs to be stricken altogether, but instead, talk about there's an expectation for Wheaton Park Stables. I think that's a, a better direction to go in.
Well, I, I don't think I'm that far off of you guys, although maybe it's kind of a glass half, half-empty, glass half-full sort of thing. I'm not here to try to say that the stables should go, but I think it's absolutely essential to make it clear in this plan that there's an expectation that the Parks Department cannot be left with the bill when the time comes when there are major capital improvements needed. It's really just that simple. And to this point about fundraising, I think putting that in the plan, I don't want to threaten anybody with the loss of, of a use that is appreciated by a lot of people in the community, but I think if you don't make it clear that it's necessary, essential, absolutely not negotiable, that there has to be a major role for private financial contributions to any major capital improvements in the facility, then you're just basically sending the message that, "Don't worry about it, we're always going to have this facility, we'll figure out how to make it work, even if we have to eat it." And that just won't, I just find that to be not a prudent course for, in terms of protecting the park system as a whole. So I don't mean to sound harsh about this, but I think that it's very important that the plans spell out that there is an expectation that the Parks Department cannot be the funder of last resort in the event that there is no other source of revenue available to pay for major capital projects. And admittedly, those might be less than I think. Maybe it will be trivial, and I hope that that's true. But having sort of seen this movie before in a place like Sligo, I think the comparison is, Sligo is similar in this respect. On an operating basis, it works just fine, it's breaking even. The problem is, these capital needs are accumulating over time, and nobody has any source of reserves to, to plan for the future to pay for those when they come due. And in the case of Sligo, we have done a facilities assessment, and we know they're about to come due. And that's putting us in a very difficult position, because people in the community that love that golf course, they don't have exactly the same arguments that are present here. I'm not saying they're the same, but it's, the dynamic is similar in that if you don't create an expectation today, in 2022, that there has to be some private source of capital for these improvements, and you let it, you sort of kick it down the road and sort of allow everybody to feel like, "Okay, it's not really a problem right now," then, five years from now, or whenever the period is, you're going to find there's suddenly a desperate need, it can't be deferred because there's life safety issues, there's ADA compliance issues, there's other things that are a big problem, and then we're in a box, because then we're the ones who are expected to put that in our capital budget, and that comes at the expense of a lot of other programs that benefit lots of people in many different ways.
Well, I also would like to remind you, remind the board that when Sligo came up, it was originally, the, the Revenue Authority proposed it for Topgolf, and it was this board that said no. So we basically, it was a self-fulfilling prophecy. We put the position, we put the Revenue Authority in a position where they could not make it work. Had they been able to put Topgolf in there, then it probably would have been sustaining, and they would have been able to redo the facilities. So what I'm saying is, I think we're on the same page then, is that we don't want to do anything in the plan that would create a difficulty. I agree with you, we can't be left holding the bag, but we can't basically be responsible for making a decision that makes it difficult, that, for, for them to fulfill, for the stables to fulfill what they're, what we're asking them to do, similar to, you know, had the board approved Topgolf operations for Sligo, they would have succeeded. So I, I hear you, but I, we got to remember the history of it as well, of Sligo as well. We didn't give them the tools that they needed, and they asked for it specifically. So I, I just don't want to get into that again. I, I don't want to create, I want to give them the tools, I want to give Wheaton Stables the tools, and that would be support through public-private partnership and language in a plan that gives, that does not imply anything but strong support for their success. And we, if you want, I don't have a problem with some language in there that talks about the expectation, but I don't want to talk about looking at it for another use during this plan, which they will rely on. I'm happy that if it doesn't, I'm not, well, not happy, but unfortunately, if it for any reason does not succeed, that they don't meet the expectations, we can always come back and amend the plan. But I don't want the plan as it stands to create any difficulty with Wheaton Park Stables being able to succeed and meet those expectations. So I think we're even there.
Okay, I think we're 95% on the same page. Maybe we could confer at some point offline to talk about some language. I'm not sure, we can hash it out right this second, and we could bring it, maybe bring, talk to the staff and maybe bring it back to the board if that's acceptable. Okay, unless somebody else has any issues with that, we could move on.
Okay. Moving on to issue number three, in terms of the top seven comment, subjects on which we received testimony and comments. Mountain biking on natural surface trails, the current planned recommendation is to convert some current trails that are limited use, meaning they're currently hiking only or hiking equestrian, converting them to multi-use consistent with the 2016 County White Park Trails Plan policy that says that the trails should be, trails should be multi-use unless there are substantial reasons why they, justifiable, justifiable reasons why they shouldn't be. So in terms of the comments, 29 of the comments, 10% of total testimony was on this topic. 18 opposed the introduction of mountain biking, and 11 supported introducing mountain biking. Our analysis is that the current policy that was approved by the board in 2016 is that all natural surface trails should be multi-use to allow all users and to sufficiently justify limited use. Under that policy, Wheaton Regional Park Trails do not comply with that policy, and some trails will remain limited use to avoid conflicts with Nature Center programming. Our recommendation says to retain the current planned recommendations, to convert some trails that are limited use to multi-use. At the request of the board, create a multi-use connection between the Arcola Trail and the Nature Center, and to keep some trails limited use to support Nature Center programming.
Okay, so that's kind of where I was going earlier. There's, there's a section, if you can bring up possibly a picture in the, I don't know if you have it available in the plan, that shows some of the trails, particularly the ones that you're, that you're recommending converting to multi-use versus retaining Great. I think that you just go past, yeah. So again, I'm, I'm going back to the issue of the stables. I understand that what we're looking for is to provide access to bicycles to get from one side of the park to the other. The one is shown by B1, and they need, and they would like to get down past A8 to Kent Mill Road, so that they can get over to the Rachel Carson area, because there are some, some bike trails, and mostly separated bikes, bike trails from equestrian and pedestrian trails. So I don't, I don't have a problem creating that route for bicycles to go, but I would not want to take away the major loop that is indicated as the Wheaton Loop Trail that you have marked, yes, as your cursor is showing. I want to retain most of that for horses and pedestrians. I mean, I'd like to retain all of it, but if we, we really do need to address the bicycle access. And the reason is that the experience for the riders would be less than satisfactory, and again, leading to lack of, of support, more difficulty in the stables meeting our expectations, because people expect that experience, the trail riding experience, and as I believe you said earlier, that, that is one of the only down-county areas where you get a trail experience for equestrians. And so I want to provide that, particularly because you do have a lot of community that is, that has disabilities, they sometimes have to walk with a lead, and that makes it too crowded, and I, I want to retain that experience for both, for the riders. And so if you can work on figuring out a way to allow access, maybe it's a limited use, a very limited use of that loop trail, so that it can be avoided by, you know, so that the conflicts are avoided. I'm, I'm really concerned about the, that conflict between bicycle riders and horse- and horses. You know, we see it on the Capitol Crescent Trail, you see it on other places, even the pedestrians get nervous with the bike riders. So I can't even imagine with a large animal like a horse, particularly when they serve that community, a lot of people who are not experienced in controlling, controlling a horse. So if you could take a look at that, that's, that's my major concern about the trail system, as I want to keep that loop in there, restricted, mostly restricted for horses and, and pedestrians, if, you know. And I know that the chair had some ideas, or, you know, if you all can come up with something.
I did have a proposal, but I didn't want to cut anybody else off if anybody wants to weigh in.
I had a question for Commissioner Rubin. When you say, as far as this loop, some of it would be all access, which portion are you referring to? Because I would prefer that it be just hiking and equestrian for the reasons that you mentioned. I'm concerned about the liability, but I'll pause to hear what you're, what you have to say.
I think what we're talking about is that section that kind of parallels Glen Allen, that, where the cursor is. If that's possi, I mean, if that's the only way that you can get the bicycle access, you know, going across to, I, I think that's what they're wanting to use it for, is access to the, to the trail across, when it goes across Kent Mill Road, which is the green line. So it's that part that parallels Glen Allen only, but the rest of the area would remain restricted. Does that answer your question?
It does. I still maintain what I said earlier. Okay.
Well, I'll ask the staff to weigh in on this, but I think Carol basically let it out. I think you cannot ride a bike north-south through the park right now legally on any of these trails. And I, I was actually in the park on a bike a few weeks ago, and I found myself in the position of really being, it's really the, that segment of the trail or nothing if you're trying to get from the southern end of the park to try to get back over to, to Kent Mill to try to go north if you're trying to go through the park. In addition, I'd just point out that this board, several times in the past couple of years, has been adamant at pressing the park staff to provide bicycle access through the park north-south and also over to the, to the Nature Center. Natalie was big on that. I've pressed them. I think a couple of you have weighed in in favor of that, too. I understand that in ideal world, people would prefer to have separate trails for everything, but that's probably not feasible here, and I'll let the park staff comment on that one or the other if they have a different opinion or, or not. I'd like to hear that. But I think that we have shown elsewhere in the system that we have a lot of trails, Little Bennett, for example, extensive trails where bikes and horses share the trail successfully. I understand with some of the people who are beginners, or some other people you mentioned earlier have physical or, or emotional issues, that, that can be disconcerting. But I think that in order, I think it's a pretty limited point of conflict. And if the horses retain exclusive access with hikers to, to basically what's, I think, in excess of three-quarters of that trail, that's a pretty reasonable compromise that still accomplishes the goal. And I just think, really, a park like this really needs to have bicycle access all the way through. I mean, it's just crazy that a place that's, particularly in this location, doesn't have it right now. So that's kind of my position. I think if you want, we could ask the park staff, they could explore other, you know, parallel trail options. But I think what you're going to hear from, maybe not the people who are sitting in front of us, but some of the resources staff, they are not going to like the idea of building another parallel trail through this, through that segment. But if they wanted to do that, I don't have any problem with that to provide separated access. I think Darren wants to say something.
Is, is there room on Glen Allen Road?
So for the record, Darren Flouche, Division Chief, Park Planning and Stewardship, Trails Supervisor at the time of, of developing these recommendations. We, we do have a recommendation for a gravel shoulder on, on Glen Allen. It's, it is challenging. I consider that a medium and long-term solution that may, you know, may at some point be trumped by other changes to, to Glen Allen itself. So for the immediate term, we're looking at what can be done now. And we wrestled with this, this question a fair amount as we were developing the recommendation and, you know, consulting with the, the stables folks and, and our trails team. The chair is correct. One of our priorities for the trails recommendations, which you'll, you'll see, I think, reflected in, in the map, is to really be pretty careful to limit new trail development in, in particularly that area of the, the park for resource reasons. And so we were focusing on renovating the existing trails and, and then this question of what trails do we preserve as hiking and, hiking only or hiking and equestrian, and what do we convert to, to multi-use. I, I just have to say, thinking about it, I mean, I'm amenable to the recommendation that you're suggesting, Commissioner Rubin, for that segment at the top to be multi-use. Obviously, it's not ideal because it stands between the stables and the rest of the loop, but it is probably the, the shortest distance of trail that would allow us to achieve our goals without developing more. So I think, you know, we can certainly sleep on it and, and see if we come up with anything better. But, and I can go back to my original brainstorm list of 11 scenarios and, and see if anything strikes us as, as striking a better balance than this. I think it, my, my first gut reaction is that something along these lines would be best, with the note that we will need to be really intentional about signage and communication.
Yeah.
Because the, one of the arguments for converting the whole loop was simplicity of messaging and, and understanding of, of what's allowed where. This would be, you know, a smaller distance of conflict, so I think we can handle that, but it would require some intentionality.
Would there also, I'm just throwing this out because I don't know if this is possible, and it might be cost prohibitive as well, of changing the access from the, where the stables come in. And so where their horses come, they can potentially, I'm, I'm just, I don't know, I'm not going to design it, but don't, I would ask that, when you look at your designs, if you could look, instead of that access, if there's a way to bring that so that you're even reducing the conflict some, so that perhaps the horses come on and it's not a, they don't go in an entire circle, but it's kind of a peninsula.
You mean, take that connector and, or put a connector to the east?
Yes.
Yeah. You know, I, actually, I think there might be something to that because that part of Glen Allen is safer, it has better sightlines. The closer you, the further west you go on Glen Allen, the more dangerous it is to cross the road on a horse or ride along it on a bicycle. So I think that you might be on to something, there might be merit at some point in, to, if there was a lot of conflict, to put a connector, to move or add a connector so horses could get access to the, to that part of the loop without having to share that segment with bicycles. Although honestly, I predict that you're not going to see a ton of bicycles on that segment. It's not, I don't think you're going to find there's a lot of conflict here. But if I'm wrong about that, I think there might be an opportunity to create an access point that further limited the extent of that shared use space.
So could we ask this team to come back with the analysis in the next work session instead of coming to a conclusion today on this topic?
What I would suggest is that, I, I mean, it's kind of, and the staff again can tell me I'm wrong about this if I, if they think I'm off base here. But I think that's the kind of thing that will require some additional study beyond like just looking at over the next week or two. I would suggest that the plan simply say that, you know, in the short term, we want to provide bicycle access, multi-use access along that segment so bikes can get through, that we should be exploring opportunities to limit the extent of the conflict either by moving that connector, creating a parallel trail, or whatever else you want to do. Or, for that matter, in the medium and long term, adding a gravel shoulder along Glen Allen. That would kind of solve that problem as well. But I think what we've heard is that's probably not a short-term solution in any case. So I would suggest that the plan could just frame this as, in the short term, multi-use, and this, and that the plan should contemplate that the, that the Parks Department should be examining and implementing tweaks to that to try to minimize any conflict.
To clarify, multi-use on the segment we're discussing?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I think we, we, so to Commissioner Patterson's point, I think our plan is, our final session in a couple of weeks is, is to provide our, the feedback we got today. So we'll take, we'll process what we hear and make edits and final recommendations. And if we can, if there's a desire to, to discuss language on the stables and this, in the, in the interim, we can, we can do that.
So for the record, I don't support this piece, but continue on with your presentation.
We concluded this section of the, we're ready to move on. Could I just get a sense of, are others on the board okay with the, what I'm going to call the Carol proposal? I don't want to stick you with it.
Well, I, I, I'd like to see, I'd like to see, yeah. But I, I think, let's see what the language says. But yeah, I, I'm all right with, but I, I do, there's absolutely got to be a minimization of any conflicts, but I'm, I'm just one vote. So I don't know where, I don't, I, I, I do agree with, frankly, I, I agree with, with Commissioner Patterson, but I'm looking for some kind of a compromise so that we can move forward and so that at least the, there is as little conflict as possible, and that that's the goal. I prefer no conflict, but I understand we also, I mean, I think we should talk about the preference is to do no con, you know, parallel or some other mechanism, or finding another way to get on and off for the, for the horses. But I, I, you know, I, I'm, I'm going to compromise, but I do agree with Commissioner Patterson.
And I'm compromising, too, from the other direction.
But we're going to get, we're going to get options. I mean, you're going to come back to us, is what I'm hearing. Is that correct? Or no? I mean, where, where are we leaving things?
My thought was to provide, to take this feedback and provide a recommendation for your approval or disapproval. But we can, I'm also happy to continue the, the conversation over the next week.
They're looking for the direct direction, so if you have a strong preference now, it would be a good time.
No, what I, what I'm trying to figure out is, it sounds like there's a couple of options that we're talking about. But I think what's not clear to me is that, Kit, you mentioned that there were issues with creating a new trail. Is that a yes or no? Can we do that, or we can't do it? I mean, it sounds like you, you mentioned that there were some constraints there.
We would strongly prefer not to create a parallel, single-use trail to the existing loop to make this connection.
But there's nothing that's preventing you from doing it?
Only our own resource priorities.
Okay, got it. I mean, I'm, look, I, I'm okay with what Carol is suggesting. I mean, I think it's a good compromise.
Okay, what's next?
The next topic that we've received the, the most testimony on, in order, is bird habitat and birding experience. So the current planned recommendation recognizes the importance of birding in the forested areas of the park and recommends that some trails remain hiking only to protect the birding experience. We had 13 people testify or submit written comments expressing concern about the potential loss of bird habitat and potential impacts of planned improvements to important, important birding locations in the park. The birders are concerned about potential impacts to certain areas of the park, most notably the lower parking lot of the Shorefield area where we're proposing soccer courts and basketball courts. The gravel road leading to Pine Lake, right now, there's a gravel road from Henderson Avenue leading to Pine Lake that we're proposing to, to pave. And the forests surrounding Pine Lake are also important to the birders. Staff believes that planned improvements in these areas can be implemented, implemented in a way that minimizes the impacts of the bird habitat. We did have a meet, onsite meeting with the birders on Friday, May 13th, and they showed us all the areas that are important to them, and we felt like there is a way for us to do, still do what we are proposing to do and also protect their interests. So we also think that there are opportunities to upgrade or add meadows in the park, which we currently have not identified and addressed in the plan, to enhance bird, bird habitat and the birding experience. So our recommendation is to retain the existing recommendations, but highlight the areas of concern to birders. During the plan implementation, the language that we're proposing is during plan implementation, special care should be taken to avoid unnecessary impacts to trees in the lower parking lot of the Shorefield area, as well as along the gravel road to Pine Lake and the forests around Pine Lake, and also identify opportunities to upgrade meadows and add new meadows to improve bird habitat and the birding experience.
Looks good to me.
Yeah, I think that goes without saying that that's how we would implement anyway. So the first, the first bullet is that that's what we would do anyway. And I, I, I'll agree then with the staff's recommendation.
I think we're all in agreement with that.
Okay, then the next issue, number five, is natural resources. The draft plan recognizes the importance and sensitivity of the park's forests and the benefits they provide for ecosystem function, wildlife habitat, and natural resource recommendation. The plan also recognizes that the park was developed at a time when modern stormwater management was, was not first and foremost. So we do recognize that there are opportunities to improve the stormwater runoff in the park for both existing development and also new development. 13 people or groups testified, submitted comments expressing their concerns about potential overdevelopment of the park, the forest fragmentation, the impacts to forests and wildlife habitat, adding imperviousness that will increase sediment and pollution loads into Sligo Creek and Northwest Branch. This gets into the comments from the neighbors of the Northwest, Northwest Branch that were endorsed by a number of groups. Doing more to control non-native invasive plants in the park and minimizing lighting impacts to wildlife. The plan does include a section on natural resources stewardship, both for protecting and preserving habitat for wildlife and aquatic species. The plan highlights the park's biodiversity area and its importance to wildlife habitat. And something I don't include in my notes today is that in a few weeks, the board will be reviewing a forest conservation plan for the entire park that will identify the areas that will be permanently protected and the areas that will be potentially impacted in the future by the planned improvements identified in this master plan. The plan includes recommendations to improve streams and stormwater runoff. The plan does not specifically mention non-native plants as an issue in the park and associated efforts to remove them. And the plan does not specifically discuss, although we did talk about it internally, about mitigation measures for potential lighting impacts to wildlife. So our recommendation is to retain the existing recommendations, but to add some language to the plan. In the natural resources stewardship section, we'll add language that says, increase efforts to better manage and control non-native plants in the park. And in the implementation section, ensure all new lighting in the park meets the standards and guidelines of the International Dark Sky Association to minimize potential impacts to the park's wildlife.
Looks good to me.
I don't have any problem with that, except for one, well, I don't, I may not have any problem with it, but we're talking about improving pedestrians as well as bicycle, bicycle access to Brookside Gardens, like during Garden of Lights. And I know park staff has talked about lighting that existing paved trail that goes from the parking lot over by the carousel, whichever one that's called. carousel, whichever one that's called. I can't remember which, what the name of that is. It's not from the ice skating rink area, it's from the.
Upper Shorefield.
Upper Shorefield, thank you. From Upper Shorefield, so you can walk basically down the hill into Brookside Gardens. I would just want to make sure that we're not saying something inconsistent if you're going to light that path.
Yeah, I don't think we are. I think there is a recognition by the folks who are working on that project that the lighting needs to be minimized to only ensure the safety of the people walking that path. It doesn't need to be, you know, it should be directed down, which would be consistent with the International Dark Sky Association, I believe.
We're going to use closed sticks.
Closed sticks, right. Yeah, I'm not aware of any other part of this plan that would increase the lighting impact. I mean, over in the Rubini area, you've got lighted ball fields, but I don't think, I can't think of any other place where you're going to increase the scope of the lighting, unless I'm.
The Dog Park was, was, two of the people were expressly identified, they're concerned about us lighting the Dog Park.
Okay. But you think that can be done consistent with the language that you're proposing?
I do.
Yeah. Any issues with that? Okay, moving right along.
Issue number six, bicycle, pedestrian, and transit access. The current recommendations in the plan includes numerous recommendations to improve bicycle and pedestrian access to the park, but also between activity areas within the park. The plan includes recommendations to improve the safety of bicyclists and pedestrians, as well as upgrade entrances and add wayfinding signs. Twelve people submitted comments supporting and applauding our recommendations to improve bicycle, pedestrian, and transit access to the park, but several people commented that the plan should say more about improving transit access to the park. As mentioned, the plan includes numerous recommendations to improve bicycle, pedestrian, and transit access, as well as wayfinding, and it recognizes there are opportunities to improve transit service to the park, but does not specifically include any recommendations to improve transit service to the park, in part because the park master plan primarily focuses on recommendations within the park boundaries. That being said, under the park access section of the plan, we believe there is an opportunity to add some language, and we're suggesting at the bottom here. Coordinate with the Montgomery County Department of Transportation to identify ways to improve transit service to the park, including changes to existing bus routes and schedules, primarily ride on Route 31, potential creation of new bus routes serving the park, and the potential expansion of on-demand service to include roads surrounding the park. Currently, there are two pilot on-demand transit service areas nearby to the park in the Glenmont and Wheaton areas, and we feel there may be an opportunity to expand those pilot areas to include the roads around the park. And we have had meetings with DOT about these ideas, and they were open to it and suggested that we participate in their reimagine ride-on study to advocate for these improvements.
I think, I think at some time in the past, and I don't know whether it's in the plan and just wasn't addressed as part of the comments today, I just don't recall, but bicycle parking is part of, you know, where there's limited access or where you have to get off your bicycle. I mean, I generally ride my bike to the park and I, I chain it to just a fence when I come in at the nature center, for example. So I just want to make sure that that's something that's covered in the, in the plan.
For the record, Darren Fleschette, we have detailed recommendations for bike racks, and we have some bike racks purchased that we're just waiting for the ink to dry and this and thing, and we'll go install.
This looks good to me. I always like the idea of reimagining our bus routes. I feel like we don't update those nearly as much as we need to, just given demand. You know, maybe somewhere down the road, people will start taking the metro and want to access parks, and I know we, do we have a shuttle service right now from Glenmont to Brookside, or is that only on special occasions when we do that? We don't have anything dedicated, do we, Mike?
I don't know. I don't believe so.
I don't think so either, but there's.
That's for special events.
Special events, yeah. So I mean, there's a, I'm sure there's a future where that does happen, but I think this is great. We can move on to the next item.
All right, the last issue that we want to focus on today is noise and traffic impacts. We did have a number of people who submitted comments concerned about the improvements in the Rubini Athletic Complex. So the current plan recommendation does not, does not include any potential mitigation measures for noise and traffic impacts to neighbors. But however, we do believe there is an opportunity for the plan to include language to address their concerns. Just for the record, most of the commenters, or maybe all of them, were not opposed to the plans for recommendations per se, but they are concerned about the impacts to Oribal Avenue and Arcola, the entrance at our Oribal. So while staff was mindful of the staff, the plans for recommendations on the potential impacts, we did talk about it, particularly along Oribal, it does not include recommendations to mitigate potential impacts. We agree the plan should acknowledge that there may be impacts to these, to the homes that are nearest to the Rubini complex. So what we're recommending is that the plan add language, that we add language to the plan, the implementation section, that acknowledges the potential noise and traffic impacts, and that during implementation, we may need to employ mitigation measures to minimize the impacts to these neighbors.
Particularly with the new pickleball courts.
Yeah, the pickleball may be more significant than the vehicles. But that all sounds good to me. Anyone else? Yeah?
I think that's the last one.
Is that it?
And that's it for today.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, what is coming up next? We are going to turn to Forest Conservation Plan Amendment for Potomac Farm Estates after a short word from our sponsors. All right, we're ready for item six, which is the Forest Conservation Plan Amendment for Potomac Farm Estates, Lot 1, Block C, with Stephen Peck.
Stephen Peck, Senior Forest Conservation Inspector, intake and regulatory coordination, presenting the staff presentation for this Forest Conservation Plan Amendment. The subject property is Potomac Estates, Lot 1, Block C. Address is 10501 Chapel Road. This is a Forest Conservation Plan Amendment to a 2007 approved Forest Conservation Plan. The plan amendment is in response to a violation for forest clearing in category-one conservation Summary of the amendment is that the front west, known as the west easement, of 1.16 acres will be retained. There is a strip of land between the Pepco, between River Road and this metal fence where it's been mowed and trees have been cut during Pepco maintenance pruning. That's proposed to be released in the front. The clearing that, understory clearing, the small trees that were recently cleared here will be replanted. It's about a half acre of forest planting of trees and shrubs. At the rear of the property, the proposal includes releasing the conservation easement area and mitigating offsite at a three-to-one rate, which amounts to 4.14 acres of forest planting and a conservation easement bank. A category-two easement will be proposed at the rear to protect large tulip poplar trees, and it'll be, it'll have supplemental planting, and the amendment satisfies the Forest Conservation Law. There's some background here. The applicant is, purchased the property in 2021. The previous owner had a violation that started prior to any house being on the property where a forest was cleared, and as part of a settlement agreement, a final Forest Conservation Plan was approved. This is amending that final Forest Conservation Plan. That, that plan was implemented by the previous owner to include restoration planning and the conservation easements. When it was built out by the, by the previous owner's builder, they maxed out like all the building into this like area in the middle of the property, and there are parts at the rear now where there is no, there is no yard at the rear of the property. The amendment, this is some photos of what recently occurred, while it was owned by the current owner. Another round of forest clearing, which this amendment will correct by restoring it with forest planting in the front, and combination of a release of easement in the back and supplemental planting in the back. This image shows existing conditions, and in particular in the rear, where there's improvements that were built out all the way to the existing conservation easement edge. The amendment is proposing to have yard in an area behind the house. No specimen trees will be cut. There's tree protection measures that will be implemented and approved prior to any approved tree clearing. And it retains the 1.16 acre area in the front, a half acre of supplemental planting and a half acre of category-two, which means that there could be wood chips underneath there, there could be a place that could get approved in there. But at the same time, the large trees and any planting trees, trees planted by this amendment will be protected. Even when, approval of this amendment, tulip poplar tree will remain the dominant tree on the property. It has great wildlife value, pest-free. Flowers provide honey for the native bees and native pollinators. It's quite, you know, but all the flowers usually are up 60, 70 feet, so you don't see it, but the birds and the bees see it and the butterflies, and there's a whole cycle of the tiger's fall tail, butterfly. So I think this amendment will, it complies with the Forest Conservation Law, it solves an issue regarding no yard space at the rear of the property and this mowed strip that's right next to River Road. And the mitigation is consistent with Planning Board policy of at least two-to-one offsite planting, so a total of 4.14 acres of forest planting is to be acquired offsite. The property itself is only 3.77 acres. The property itself is only 3.77 acres. Staff recommends approval of the amendment with the conditions specified in the staff report.
Would the applicant like to say anything about this, or are you just here for questions?
We're just here for questions, Chair.
That's the right answer. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. First, first question is, were there, Mr. Peck, were there any, any variance trees removed as part of the violation?
No variance trees were removed as part of the violation.
Great.
It was all understory.
Okay.
Small trees.
So really, I want to make sure, a couple of things. I don't, is there any credit given, being given for the category two creation? Because I would like to see that not, them not have credit for that because this is a violation.
No credit was given for that.
Okay. And then finally, so, so the way I read it is, it's normally a two to one, but you're, but this applicant or is going to be doing three to one, which gives us additional impact. So they asked for, so that people don't start asking for forgiveness as opposed to permission, which is what we don't want.
That's right, three to one.
So then how do we prevent this from happening again? When, when this particular applicant bought the property before coming in for the amendment, they simply violated what was just negotiated. I'm not saying it's that, you know, I don't know, how do you make sure, how are we going to make sure that there is no question? Can we put something, I mean, I know that the conservation easements are on the property. Can we put it in the deed or something that gives it a little bit more bite so that there's no question when the property is being sold that these restrictions occur?
Commissioner Rubin, Christina Sorrento for the record. The, the conservation easements are recorded against the land. They are part of the deed. But what happened here is the original owner violated originally, there was a settlement agreement. That's how you ended up with the conservation easements. And then they chose to build basically out, the entire area that was not an easement was put into a house. Afterwards, the current owner bought the property, was obviously aware of the easements, but did violate, which is why we're looking at a, a three to one here instead of a standard two to one. And also keeping things like the category two on in the back to, you know, to maintain those larger trees. But we did thought, think that this would be a recurring enforcement issue by having the, the easement, the category one easement right up against the back of the house. How we have been handling these more, you know, in more current cases is when the board sees forest conservation plans, we don't allow category one easements to come right up to the back of houses anymore. That, that's something that was occurring, you know, earlier on in the Forest Conservation Law. So that is something, that is one way that we are trying to prevent this in the future. But we do think that the way that, that we are documenting these easements, it does provide adequate notice to the property owners, but sometimes, you know, legally, but sometimes they might just not be aware because of, you know.
But as, as my previous, I had some experience as title attorney, is there a way, since they're going to have to be recording documents anyway with the easements, that we could ask that the property owner, it wouldn't, I mean, it's just a recording fee, which would be about 15 bucks, that they, they put a, maybe a corrective deed that simply indicates on the deed, not, not just the easement, but on the deed that the property is subject to forest conservation easements. The reason I say that is having been in the title business for a while, many, many title companies, title attorneys, they don't show the property owner, the, the owner what the, what the easements are. But it's pretty clear on the deed so that it would be a better notice. And it may be just to require that they put something corrective on the deed itself. And just, just saying it's subject to, to conservation easements. And I'd like to see that as a policy because that would give us a little bit more force with title, the title companies.
I think that's a great idea. I'm curious to know what happened here because you had a violation on, on the first, with the first owner, and then it was sold, and you have a second violation. Is the applicant here, Mr. Kuljit Singh? Can you explain how the violation happened the second time around? Was it just the circumstances of the violation?
Yeah, so with the way we were explained by the, the previous owner was, hey, you can cut the brushes, don't touch the trees. And I should have looked more deeper into it. I have four kids and two dogs, and there was no place. So I was like, hey, you know, we can just, to ask why you didn't cut any big trees, we just thought I could just clear this little bit area where they can play. And we also had a homeless person in that area. I showed the pictures to see when, it was all the food, all the clothing, stuff was out there. So we, we cleared a little bit more because of that, because hey, I don't want anybody to come in so we can see it. But I wish I had read more in the deed and knew that I can't cut anything. My, in fact, my impression was that all I needed to do was don't touch the big trees at all. They are protected and we didn't touch any of the trees.
I think that's helpful, and Commissioner Rubin, you make a good point. I think we should definitely include that.
Well, I, I would just suggest that in the past, in, in these type of situations, we've required signage or even a fence. So if the idea here is that you, you know, you were aware there's an easement, but you didn't know what it involved, and you're not going to go back and read the deed, I think maybe one, if, I don't know what you think about this, Carol, you could require signage that says forest conservation easement, no clearing of any vegetation or understory right there on the property. So if somebody, if the landscaper is out there, whatever, it's right there in black and white right in front of them.
There are, there are existing signs there that say do not disturb conservation easement. So you went right past the signs during this cutting.
But I think the, the Chair makes a good point that perhaps we should change the language on our signage because clearly the applicant didn't understand. He, you know, he acted in good faith, at least from what his knowledge of. He thought that, and I, and I understand that because I used to have some easements in my backyard, and a lot of my neighbors would, would start clearing, and I used to tell them, you can't do that. So they didn't understand either. It's not just about the trees, it's the understory. And so perhaps the signage could be a little bit better in the future. And then I still think that they, we could find, I'd love to find a way to, you know, our counsel indicated that it might be a problem because the seller might have to re-sign, but I think you can do a corrective deed without the, you know, or some kind of a, a deed, notice on the deed that just is a restatement without having the seller sign it because the, the grantee can sign his own, his own deed just to, to correct a condition that you place on it. I think we can figure something out, maybe with a title, title attorney. But I do agree that the signage probably needs to be a little bit informative, more informative.
I've seen signs that say no mowing, no whatever, and I don't know what the current state of the practice is on signage. But look, I'm not saying what happened here didn't happen, but at least if the sign was very explicit, nobody can come in here and argue they didn't know that meant, seriously, don't touch it, not just you can't cut down the trees, right?
These existing signs seem very explicit to me. The, these types of violations are frequent when property changes hands. Real estate agents can sort of explain things a certain way that a property owner would have to really dig down and research and read everything and to know the agreements in and out. And so that happens quite a lot where a real estate agent might say something and it's not quite correct.
Okay, well, I mean, I don't know, I could go either way on this. I'm just trying to make a constructive suggestion about how we could get it, a finer point put on it, not just in the land records, but, you know, it seems particularly landscape contractors. I think a lot of landscape contractors do know better, but when they're out in the field and the homeowner says, hey, could you clear out this, they're, you know, I think that there's some benefit to having something that stares you right in the face that, seriously, don't mow this, don't take out any vegetation, don't take out any bushes, and for sure, don't cut down any trees. But, you know, to put a finer point on it, it just seems like, and I get what you're saying. It seems pretty clear as it is, and I agree with you that I think most people that do this, they say, oh, I didn't know, and they knew. But as the case may be, let's just give everybody the benefit of the doubt, and, and that will give you a very clear record for when these type of things happen, to say, no, actually that sign told you very specifically, you're not supposed to be messing with this.
So, so I would, I would just basically ask that Ms. Sorrento, if you could kind of look into signage and look into better, you know, better recording documentation. But with that, I, I agree with the staff's recommendation for, for compliance, and I move approval. Well, I mean, what I'm asking is, not, it doesn't have to be as, I would, I would like to explore that, yes. So that this, we're not hit with it again. This could be the K, the first one that we do that with, and I'd ask that to be an ongoing policy if we can figure out how to do that. But yeah, if it can be figured out from a title perspective, without having to get the, the grantor to come back, yes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're going to abstain from this issue.
Oh, okay, yes, Carol's here. Opposed and one abstention. Thanks very much.[94.22]
Actually, you need me to explain more.
Very good. Are there questions or comments from the board for the applicant or the staff? Or is there a motion?
I move approval with staff recommendation.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's approved. Thank you very much. And I think we're gonna want to come back a little on the early side. Call it 12:40, 12:45-ish. Oh, I want to introduce Jazzy Mook, our new intern, who is a student at Davidson College in North Carolina. Welcome to, Jazzy.
Sorry, Adam, we should have applauded for you, too.
And of course, we applaud Adam as well. Okay, we're gonna come back around 12:45, so if we could get everybody online around 12:30 or so, that'd be good. Thank you.
Okay, we are back and ready for item eight, ELP Bethesda Rock Spring Phase 1B Site Plan with Emily Tittlebaum, Matt Folden, et al.
Good afternoon, Planning Board. For the record, I'm Emily Tittlebaum with the Mid-County Division. Happy to be here today to present ELP Bethesda at Rock Spring Phase 1B Site Plan 820220120. Staff recommends approval of this site plan with conditions. This is the property that's currently occupied by Marriott Headquarters, although they will be leaving probably sometime this year. This site plan is Phase 1B of a 2 million-plus-square-foot continuing care retirement community. This is a small part of the project with 5,700-square-foot marketing center and restaurant retail space proposed. So you can see the subject property here in red. It is along Fernwood Road, just east of I-270. There are a number of office buildings in the area, in addition to residential townhouses across the street. There are two approved site plans for residential uses on the other side of I-270. The Orsman Ford Multi-Family Project, which is moving forward right now, and a large mixed-use component of Westfield Montgomery Mall, which will be located along Westlake Terrace. So the area is starting to transition into a real mixed-use community. Here's a closer look at the property. It is 33.64 acres. Its zone CRF 1.5, C.75, R.1.5, H.150. As I mentioned earlier, it is the site of the Marriott Headquarters Building, which is 775,000 square feet in size. There's also an existing parking garage that's three levels onsite along the western portion of the property. There are also extensive surface parking lots over a good portion of the property. There are four existing access points along Fernwood Road. Three of them are at signalized intersections, and one is at an unsignalized intersection. The southern portion of the property, as you can see, is occupied by the Thomas Branch Stream and a stormwater management pond. So here's a look at the overall project. This is an illustrative view on your right. It's an over 2 million-square-foot project, as I mentioned before. The overall approval, preliminary plan approval includes up to 1,300 independent living units with 15% MPDU's, 210 assisted living memory care units, and 50 skilled nursing units. The approval also includes up to 5,300 square feet of retail, and at full build-out, up to 650 full-time staff will be employed at the facility. So earlier this year, you all approved Phase 1A of the project. Two residential buildings that you can see in that left-hand image on the bottom of the screen with up to 512 independent living units. You can see the phasing on the right here. The residential buildings are in front of the, or east of the existing garage, which will be retained and renovated as part of this approval. Phase 1A also includes a road diet and separated bike path along Fernwood Road. And much of the internal private road network will also be constructed. Finally, a big piece of this project is a new park that will be constructed along Fernwood Road. It will be dedicated to the Parks Department, and the Parks Department has determined that the name of the new park will be Rock Spring Urban Park. So moving on to this proposal here for a 5,700-square-foot building, which you can see at the intersection of Rock Spring Drive and Fernwood Road. Part of it will be the marketing center for the continuing care retirement community, and part of it will be a retail, a restaurant establishment. It's envisioned right now as a coffee shop. And the retail portion of the proposed building, which you can see in the left-hand image there, fronts on Fernwood Road and is designed with floor-to-ceiling glass walls. The roof of the retail use will be heightened to enhance the street presence of the building, and a large outdoor terrace will be provided along the front of the building and a portion of the western facade to help activate Fernwood Road. The existing parking lot directly adjacent to the new building will be used as an interim surface parking lot and as a construction staging area. So access to the temporary parking will be from Rock Wedge Drive. And all of the surface parking lots that are currently on the property will be removed eventually. The Phase 1B also includes the Thomas Branch Linear Park, which is a privately-owned but publicly-accessible park. It'll be 5.3 acres and includes stream restoration work on the Thomas Branch Stream Channel, including the removal of concrete channel sections, bank stabilization, and measures to dissipate the energy of erosive water flow. In addition, the work will improve stream buffer function and water quality by invasive plant species control, afforestation, and landscaping sections of the stream buffer. The design of this park will also incorporate a walking path, benches, and a nature lookout area, which will enhance water quality and habitat and also serve as an amenity for the residents and the larger community. So the final forest conservation plan that is associated with this site plan supersedes all the previously-approved forest conservation plans that have been approved for the property, and it also includes all the previously-approved impacts to variance trees. They've all been incorporated into this final forest conservation plan. So the variance includes a removal of 23 trees and planting of 72 mitigation trees for both Phases 1A and B. The project has a 5.27-acre mitigation requirement. 3.11 acres will be provided onsite within Category 2 easements that you can see up here on the screen. Two of the easements are within the Thomas Branch Stream Park area, and another easement is in the Woodland Park area along the western portion of the property. And the remaining mitigation requirements will be provided off-site. This shows the public benefits for both Phases 1A and 1B. These two phases, actually, the public benefit requirement was met in Phase 1A. And more points are provided in Phase 1B and will also be provided in future phases. The public benefits are within four categories: major public facilities, transit proximity, quality building and site design, and protection and enhancement of the natural environment. There's one minor correction to the staff report on page 34. The Rock Spring Urban Park was identified as 1.6 acres. It's actually 1.75 acres. And with that, staff recommends approval. The site plan complies with all the requirements for approval in the zoning ordinance. It's consistent with the goals and recommendations of the 2017 Rock Spring Sector Plan. And staff recommends approval with conditions of the site plan, including the final forest conservation plan. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does the applicant have anything they want to add before you take questions and comments from the board? Ms. Harris?
Thank you. Pat Harris with Larcher Liam Brewer for the record. We have no comment. I just want to thank staff for their continued support on this project. And we're really looking forward to getting things moving. As staff indicated, by the end of this year, Marriott will be moving out and we'll start to move dirt. It's all very exciting. So we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there questions or comments from the board?
I have a question for staff. On the final forest conservation plan, I noticed in Rock Spring Urban Park is one of the sites that they are, that the applicant is proposing to put Category 2 easement. I didn't know that we put, you know, that we put easements for forest conservation in areas that are going to be owned by the parks system. Is that, I mean, because it's already protected if it's being granted to the Parks Department.
So just to clarify, so the park is shown in this slide as striped here? The easements are actually in the Thomas Branch Linear Park, which is not owned by the Parks Department. That'll be a privately-owned park.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I thought it was in the, all right, so the, it's not in the urban park. Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
That's the park. Sure.
Jerry Sessi, just maybe a couple of questions of the staff. You mentioned transit proximity. Way back in the day, there was talk of an elevated people move from the metro over to the site, given all the employment that was there. There was a bus service that's proposed, and you talk about the bike lanes. Is there any issue on the bus service or?
So a BRT is proposed here along the opposite side of Fernwood Lane. There's a transit easement. I think there's also a BRT stop directly in front of the property.
So that's being accommodated?
Yeah, the BRT line is envisioned to come down Rock Spring Drive and then to head west along Fernwood to the mall property.
And then the other thing, the Maryland Transit Administration, the buses that come in from Frederick and Hagerstown, they loop around and there's a stop. Has there been any proposed changes to that with Marriott moving, perhaps extending that service to Bethesda? Or would they retain their MTA stop there, the commuter buses?
That I'm not sure about. We haven't been in touch with MTA about the exact commuter bus route that runs along here.
It gets off on the HOV lanes, and then it goes around this area. It stops across from this site, and it picks up there.
We're not aware of any changes to the current route here.
Yeah, and this is Carrie Sanders for the record, Chief Mid-County Planning. Commissioner Seachy, we don't have any changes to that route provided to us by MTA, so we're not aware of changes to that.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, if there are no further comments or questions, could we get a motion to approve?
I move approval as recommended by staff.
Jerry Sessi second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? That's approved. And we're ready.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Start moving dirt.
Yeah, we're ready for item nine, which is a brief. Okay, we're ready to talk about the Managed Lanes Proposed Parkland Mitigation Plan with Matt Harper, Doug Stevens, and others.
Great, thank you. For the record, Doug Stevens, Montgomery County Parks. I do want to note that we are joined remotely with some of our colleagues from SHA, Karen Brookman and Jeff Bolden. We also have some other park staff available today to answer questions as we work through the presentation. This briefing will be focusing on the parkland mitigation aspect of the Managed Lane Study. There will be a mandatory referral on the whole project later this year. So today, we are asking for approval of the proposed parkland mitigation plan for the Managed Lane Study. Next week, with your approval, it will be presented to the full commission, since there are aspects of land conveyance that require the full commission approval. Then, if approved, a letter agreeing to the package will be sent to SHA after June 15th and before the upcoming publication of the FEIS, the Final Environmental Impact Statement. So we'll get a little background on the project and a summary of our involvement to this point. The Managed Lane Study began in 2018 with a study area from the ICC south to 495 and included 495 from the American Legion Bridge across the top side of the Beltway over to Maryland 5 in Prince George's County. This project is a P3 or private-public partnership. Following the NEPA process, SHA will select a developer to complete design, construct, and operate the toll lanes similar to the express lanes in Virginia. The commission has been heavily involved in the NEPA process as a cooperating agency due to our role in regional planning and ownership of significant parkland. Throughout this process, we have reviewed many documents and preliminary designs and conducted numerous field investigations. Currently, SHA is preparing the final environmental impact statement, the FEIS, and previously they have published the Purpose in Need, the Draft Environmental Impact Statement, DEIS, and the Supplemental Draft Environmental Impact Statement, the SDIS. Through this process, SHA has identified a preferred alternative, Alternative 9 Phase 1 South. That is what our parkland mitigation package is based on, and we'll talk more about that in a little bit. Finally, like I mentioned today, we were just talking about the parkland mitigation as it relates to the NEPA process, and this package will be included in the upcoming FEIS and ROD. There is a parallel and concurrent process underway for cultural resources, the Section 106 process. Any cultural resource impacts will be mitigated through that process, and you'll be briefed on that at the appropriate time. I have a timeline here. Obviously, this is kind of looking forward. It's not looking backwards since 2018. You can see where we are today, briefing you on the proposed mitigation package. Like I mentioned before, next week, on June 15th, with your approval, this package will be presented to the full commission. On June 17th, SHA is planning to publish the FEIS, and then in August, they are, on August 12th, they are looking to publish the Record of Decision or ROD. We understand that after the publication of the FEIS, they will, SHA will be submitting for the first mandatory referral for this project, which means we, right now, we would be anticipating that hearing to occur sometime around September of this year. We're anticipating SHA to select the P3 developer sometime in the fall, possibly in October. Looking out ahead into the future a little bit, there will be a second mandatory referral for this project. That mandatory referral will be initiated by the P3 and would occur around the 35% design, which is standard for mandatory referrals. After that, SHA and the P3 will need to apply for park construction permits for any impacts that are going to occur on parkland, any work on parkland, and any conveyances to the Parks The original study area limits were, as mentioned before, from the ICC south and then from the American Legion Bridge over to Maryland 5 in Prince George's County. After the DEIS, SHA modified the alternatives and selected the new preferred alternative, which was presented in the SDIS. This was Alternative 9 Phase 1 South, which consists of two managed hot lanes in each direction, but significantly, the proposed area of improvements is notably less, only about 15 miles of the 48-mile study area. This means that there will be two new lanes in each direction on 495, only from the American Legion Bridge to the 270 spur, and on I-270, the HOV lane will be converted to a hot lane with the addition of another hot lane. This reduction in the project's scope reduced the potential impacts significantly, avoiding over 13 acres of Montgomery County parkland and important parks such as Rock Creek, Slago Creek, and Northwest Branch. SHA has stated that any improvements in the future for this portion of 495 would proceed through a separate environmental review process. The overall project impacts, however, are still significant as the project proposes 15 miles of highway expansion. The impacts include 116 acres of new impervious pavement, 455 acres of forest canopy loss, and this is inclusive of existing forests within the right-of-way in addition to forest on parkland, 31.6 acres of 100-year floodplain impacts, and 3.9 acres of wetland impacts. And as you can imagine, these are significant impacts due to where they're occurring, which is kind of an already highly constrained landscape. So we're going in on the commissioned parkland impacts. There are five parks in Montgomery County that will be directly impacted: Cabin John Regional Park, Cabin John SVU 6, Old Farm Neighborhood Conservation Area, Tilden Woods Stream Valley Park, and Cabin John SVU 6. The total area of impact on commissioned parkland is 8.2 acres, with seven and a half of those acres considered permanent impact and .7 acres as temporary impacts. Temporary impacts to parkland are the result of area needed for construction but not needed ultimately for the right-of-way. These figures on this slide here, which are included in the memo and also published in the SDIS, show the proposed LOD in yellow and encompass all of the impacts to parkland. Park staff have worked to apply the requirements of the policy for parks as outlined in the proposed plan, which is to first avoid and minimize impacts to parkland, then mitigate and compensate for unavoidable impacts. Due to these efforts, the parkland impacts are generally constrained to narrow areas directly adjacent to the highway. There are instances of larger areas of impact associated with highway overpasses, stormwater management facilities, and outfall channels. It is important to note that this project does impact areas of parkland that have a high natural resource value, such as 2.8 acres of designated biodiversity area in Cabin John Regional Park, and 0.6 acres of best natural area in Cabin John SVU 2. And we want to note that, you know, that those impacts are especially important due to the already constrained, you know, setting of this, of the location here, and, you know, you can't, we can't mitigate for these types of impacts in this vicinity because this area is largely built out already. So SHA has committed to providing meaningful benefit to resources, and we believe that we have compiled a parkland mitigation package that adequately mitigates for those proposed impacts. The plan contains 42.38 acres of replacement land that provides equal or greater natural, cultural, and recreational value. In addition, parkland enhancements are proposed for every park that is impacted by the project. In addition, SHA has agreed to include incentives for the project, in the project, for the developers to exceed stormwater management requirements and to reduce the LOD and right-of-way where possible. If the mitigation package is approved, further details and expectations will be codified in an MOU between SHA and MNC PPC. Finally, SHA has indicated that the P3 developer will be responsible for all of the parkland enhancements, and that SHA and the P3 will work together on the land conveyances depending on the type of property. This figure shows the location of the five parcels to be conveyed to the commission. On the top left, you can see the Serpentine Barrens parcels. On the top right side are the Northwood Connector Trail properties, and the bottom right is the Maryland 97 16th Street Right-of-Way parcel. Also, as I mentioned previously, SHA, the P3, and MNC PPC will work together throughout the design to continue to reduce impacts to existing parkland through the park permit review and financial incentives for the P3. This agreement is essential as the impacts now are based on preliminary information. We're going to run through the properties that will be conveyed to the commission. This slide shows the Serpentine Barrens. This addition will add 24 acres to the Serpentine Barrens Conservation Park and protect more of the unique geology and plant communities that are present here. In addition, it will provide more opportunity for future trail and network development. This is the Montgomery Hills, Maryland 97 16th Street Right-of-Way. This right-of-way is specified to become parkland as part of the Forest Land Montgomery Hills Sector Plan, and the SHA Montgomery Hills Transportation Improvement Project, which is a separate project from the Managed Lane Study, will modify the roadway and improve pedestrian and cycling amenities in this area and allow for a future park on the unused right-of-way. The current project's schedule anticipates design completion in the fall of 2025 and the notice to proceed in 2027. Construction of improvements would occur after the notice to proceed and take approximately three years. The commission looks forward to the implementation of these transportation improvements, but if the project is not moving forward, parks will retain the option of seeking an alternative property to fulfill the mitigation requirements.
I had a question about that piece--
Sure.
--of property, if you can go back. So how does it work? Because if you go back to that 16th Street parcel, this slip lane that's there, is that part of the land that's being--
Are you speaking coming south off of--
Yeah.
--97 onto 16th Street? That's going to be removed as part of their planned project?
The plan.
And so that land would be part of this--
The mitigation.
Okay.
Okay.
There is a more, slightly more detailed figure in the memo that shows, that's a little bit more zoomed in on this parcel.
Taking additional questions?
Sure.
The issue also came up in that general area of the west side of the Beltway about cemeteries. Is that not covered in this? Is that a different issue?
That's a different issue. That would be covered through the Section 106 process.
Okay. And then there seems to be a pushback on the Beltway through Bethesda and Silver Spring. Does that affect all the Beltways being pushed back as a separate project or? It seemed to me Prince George's was interested in proceeding with their part of the Beltway. They were looking for additional access on and off, and then actually, they had VDOT people on television talking about them looking at improving their Beltway in Alexandria, the bridge, and then going to Indian Head Highway, which is in Prince George's. And the state had left a gap between Route 5 and what is now known as Indian Head Highway, but seemed to be any input from Prince George's on this? This is strictly Montgomery County?
This is just the park impacts from this piece. If something else, if they want to do some other thing in Prince George's County, that won't be our issue to argue about, about parks impact.
How about the Beltway, though? They would come back to us?
They would have to come back to us because they would have, if they wanted to do the Beltway between the split and the Prince George's County line, they're going to have impact on Slago Creek, Northwest Branch, Rock Creek Park, a whole bunch of things, and then we'll be back to the table to discuss what--
The other thing, too, I don't know if the state has considered, if, as you came south on 270, when you got to the ICC, if they had a sign that said Prince George's and Annapolis, people would perhaps, I know there's a toll, but they would, there will be tolls on some of these other roads, but they would be able to take that to I-95 and then head to Prince George's, Annapolis, et cetera. But I think they're missing an opportunity to take traffic off our Beltway through Bethesda and Silver Spring, but I don't think they've considered that. So you're not dealing with traffic, you're just dealing with--
Yeah, I think--
--replacement property.
For the record, this is Matt Harper with Montgomery Parks. I think these will be relevant comments when they come for their first mandatory referral in September to sort of speak to some of those issues. For this, right now, because the FEIS has not yet been published with the preferred alternative, we are just speaking to the impacts of the preferred alternative on--
And what about parks in the city of Rockville? I think that's been raised. Is that also mentioned anywhere? And perhaps, I don't know, in Gaithersburg, but I've, you know, live in Rockville, so I've heard some--
Yeah, again, that would be addressed in the mandatory referral.
Okay, no, nothing in this particular park's discussion about--
Only, this is only commission property.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
All right, so this slide that you have here, this is the last of the properties to be conveyed. These are, there are actually two parcels here that SHA currently owns, adjacent to Northwood High School, and they contain the existing Northwood Chesapeake Bay Trail. This trail is a high priority connector for parks, which links the Slago Creek Trail and the Northwest Branch Trail. These parcels have actually already undergone an internal SHA review process for disposition and should be conveyed to MNC PPC shortly after the publication of the ROD. This acquisition will allow parks to improve way findings and trail condition in this area.
I have a question on that. They would make that property available to Montgomery County?
Yeah, so this property has been slated for conveyance for the mitigation--
With a fee or no fee?
No, no fee, so as a mitigation property, so they'd be conveying it to the--
The Montrose School came up where they're transferring some of the Rockville Freeway right-of-way to the county for bikeway and to Montrose School, but they, there's a price to do that, and so with this one, there's no price to make the transfer.
That's right. So all these properties that I've mentioned are part of the mitigation package, so these would be conveyed directly to MNC PPC with no fee.
Okay.
The price is the 7.5 acres of right-of-way that they will be taking from the five parks that we just spoke to. So it's not, it's not free.
They would, when you say what's not free, the--
There's 7.5 acres of existing parkland that they need for use of their future right-of-way.
And they would pay for that? Some, they pay, or is just the replacement parks?
It's compensated by the replacement parkland--
The replacement park.
--and the rest of the mitigation package, which Doug's going to get into here shortly.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so that wraps up the parkland conveyance properties. In addition to the property conveyance, there is a full list of proposed enhancements, and that full list is included in the memo. We'll go over some of the highlights here. All park parcels affected will receive some mitigation work. SHA has agreed to replace the existing Old Farm Creek Stream Culvert and Tuckerman Lane roadway overpass with a single bridge structure. If you look at your figure, that's kind of on the bottom right where that circle is. This will allow for pedestrian and cycling improvements to be added to Tuckerman Lane. It will restore the stream channel to a natural channel with a restored floodplain, and this new connectivity under the highway adjacent to the stream will allow for wildlife and park users to connect to previously disconnected park areas. If you look at this figure and you move kind of on the bottom a little bit to the west or to the left along Tuckerman Lane, there will be a parking area improvement with some trailhead improvements into Cabin John Regional Park. SHA is committed to constructing three new fiberglass trail bridges within Cabin John Regional Park. There are going to be three stormwater outfalls restored within the Cabin John watershed. And if you see the, kind of the yellow lines-- And if you see the, kind of the yellow lines along the edges of these properties, S H A is committed to on all edges of the prop, of parkland that are adjacent to the L O D to do a long-term vegetation management, including non-native invasive control and reforestation to park standards.
On, on your chart there, if you go back one, on, down on the, where the last circle is on the right, the school board park lot, parking lot, I think that land was maybe gotten from parks once or not? Is that, is that school board property or is that?
That area on the bottom right there that is gray on this figure is school board property, yes.
The school board. I, I thought maybe originally it was parks or they had a rental agreement, no? So that, but there's no discussion of impact on there or any replacement of that?
Not, not through our process, no.
Okay, great, thank you.
This figure shows Cabin John S P U two, and if you look in the, on the bottom left on the locator map, you can see this is where Cabin John Parkway comes into four ninety-five south of River Road and, and north of the Potomac River. This whole interchange is actually going to be rebuilt. And with that, S H A has agreed to do stream restoration and stabilization for about a thousand feet in that area, include an area of wildlife passage to connect two disjointed park units, implement some asphalt restoration, and along Seven Locks Road, do parking and trailhead improvements for, for the parks' trail system. While stormwater management is not technically a parkland mitigation element, it is vital to the protection of aquatic resources on parkland. The managed lanes project is required to meet Maryland Department of the Environment, M D E, regulations related to both stormwater quality, which removes pollutants, and quantity, which reduces downstream flooding. And S H A has made progress in meeting the regulatory requirements on site since we last briefed the planning board. However, due to the large increase of impervious one hundred and sixteen acres, S H A has agreed to provide an incentive to the P three to provide stormwater treatment above what is required. S H A and the commission will work together to establish a target level of additional water quality treatment, which will be codified in the M O U. We expect this to be a meaningful target to provide enhanced protection for aquatic resources. And then just a few more additional project expectations. I've mentioned the M O U a few times here, but if this package is, is approved both today and at the full commission, then we will begin that process with S H A to work out all the details of, of land conveyance, technical details, timelines, and things of that nature within this M O U. I've mentioned the mandatory referrals, but there will be two of them. The first one we anticipate happening either probably early, early fall in September. That will be initiated by S H A. The second mandatory referral would be initiated by the P three at the thirty-five percent design. And finally, I've mentioned the park construction permits, but S H A will be required to go through the park construction permit process for all impacts and work on parkland and for all land conveyances. And finally, just to, to wrap up here, so today we are asking for the approval of the Managed Lanes Study Parkland Mitigation Proposal. And with that approval, we would move to then present it next week at the full commission for, for approval at that meeting. And then, like I've mentioned, a letter would be sent from the commission to S H A agreeing to this mitigation package ahead of the publication of the F E I S on June seventeenth. And that's all I have. You can take questions if you have them.
Let me just, I just want to compliment you on your effort to negotiate all of that with State Highway. Sometimes that can be difficult and, but I, I think you guys have done a good job on some of that.
Thank you, yeah, it has been a long process.
Okay, so please bear with me. I have a long history with this project and therefore I have a lot to say. So what, it's clear to me that what we have today before us is simply the park staff requesting guidance on mitigation package to address the severe impacts to the natural resources to which this commission is the steward. And this will enable park staff to negotiate an M O U that must be included in the F E I S and the rod. But it is also important, and I would like to get on the record, the continuing deficiencies of the managed lanes process, so they are not forgotten and that the planning board's action today is not misunderstood. So on, on July twentieth, twenty, twenty twenty-one, five members of the county council issued a statement to allow the project to be included in the Visualized Twenty Forty-Five Air Quality Conformance Analysis at the Transportation Planning Board. And it contained details about the county's expectations. The agreement was to work with Secretary of Transportation Slater, who was then the secretary, on issues of concern and not make the American Legion Bridge ineligible for the federal approval funds by being excluded from the air quality conformity analysis. It was not an endorsement of the project at its then current state or of the P three delivery model. The letter stated, "We hope to move forward and work collaboratively and constructively with Secretary Slater on these issues of concern and to do so in a way that does not make the much-needed improvements to the American Legion Bridge ineligible for federal approval and funding." The July twentieth letter and the county council did not give the project a free pass, nor did that letter abrogate the need for the project N M dot S H A to address the previous issues that both the county council and the Park and Planning Commission have had with this project, which has been, which have been raised on many an occasion. So I just want to read the letter so it's clear that, that everyone understood what the council's intention was for this project and that what our job is to do in addition to protecting our resources, but to follow through and support the county council's position. This new, and this is a quote, "This new, this new commitment builds on prior changes we have been asking for, including removing the eastern section of the Beltway from the plan, rebuilding the American Legion Bridge so that it can structurally support a future transit line and including a shared use trail on the bridge. For more than a decade, Montgomery County has supported adding capacity to the American Legion Bridge and the Beltway west of the I two seventy spur in the context of a multimodal approach to the two seventy corridor. Based on recent conversations, we appreciate the state's new commitment to specifically fund design of one of our longstanding transit priorities, either the Carter City Transitway or Bus Rapid Transit on Route three fifty-five at the outset of the project and work collaboratively with the county to develop plans for construction, operation, and final delivery funded through ongoing toll revenue. It should also be noted that the express toll lanes and their direct connections to several crossing roads afford the opportunity to provide high-speed bus rapid transit service up and down the I two seventy corridor and to Tyson's Corner, Dulles Airport, and other destinations in Virginia. In addition to sustained funding for transit priorities as part of a multimodal project, we will continue to advocate for changes to the project that sufficiently mitigate impacts on residents and businesses, safeguards the interests of Montgomery County taxpayers, and achieves an appropriate and respectful resolution to protect sensitive community resources such as the Moses Morning Star Cemetery. Ultimately, we recognize that Montgomery County must remain tightly connected with the rest of the Washington Metropolitan Region with a real transit alternative and further opportunities to work with the state. To improve the project moving forward, we believe the county should vote to allow the project to be included in the Visualized Twenty Forty-Five Air Quality Conformance Analysis at the Transportation Planning Board." So, the council must act for and prioritize project improvements. The council is not in the weeds, but the commission is and has to stay in the weeds on its behalf to advocate for our priorities or the county will lose its voice. So do not forget, anyone listening, do not forget that the state has still not addressed many of the concerns that have been raised, beginning with the purpose and need and with each step as this goal project has advanced. So with that, with, with that being said, I want to, I want to say what is not being addressed today, it's not part of this briefing, but it must be addressed as the project moves forward. First, no multimodal solution has been honestly considered that would incorporate transportation demand management and transit as components to this project. Other than building more road, any other solution is just an ancillary appendage with insufficient funding. Speaking of which, the transit funding that former Secretary Slater committed to the county must be guaranteed through written commitments. Two, this project does nothing to address a regional transportation solution, including through land use applications to reduce, in order to be consistent with the county's longstanding transportation policies, to reduce automobile dependency. There is not a firm commitment to the up county north of three seventy to do something in the near term as part of a regional solution, as demonstrated in the state's traffic analysis. The toll lanes, as planned, will make the general purpose lanes no better off and likely worse unless other improvements north of three seventy are made. A complete financial analysis has not been done to assure that the financial burden of this project will not fall on the taxpayers of Maryland as claimed by the state. Therefore, it is not clear that a P three is even an appropriate delivery model, particularly with federal infrastructure monies now available. An environmental justice and impact analysis is still lacking, and that would include considerations not to simply minimize and avoid adverse impacts to marginalized communities, but to right the wrongs of the past as the Biden administration has suggested is the correct course. A Section one oh six historic preservation analysis is incomplete and fails to address cumulative impacts to cultural and historic resources. There is not an honest climate change analysis that includes greenhouse gas emissions and clean air impacts. And I continue to have concerns about future expansion. Even though the state has indicated it would not move forward with expansion of four ninety-five east from two seventy to ninety-five without an E I S under NEPA, I do not trust that since that is exactly what Virginia has not done. They have gone forward with simply an environmental analysis, they have not done an environmental impact statement. As the toll lanes have been expanded from the Dulles Toll Road to the American Legion Bridge and now moving east to the Woodger Wilson Bridge, V dot has instead conducted, as I said, an environmental analysis without going through the formal steps of an E I S by suggesting it is simply an extension of an existing project. Case in point, why is there a transition from two seventy to Old Georgetown Road as part of this phase? In fact, not only is the transition not needed, but both that, this and future phase, that both that and future phases should be eliminated from any further discussion, including from the cog plan to be consistent with the resolution in July that returned phase one of the project to Visualize Twenty Fifty as recommended by, as indicated in the council, in the county council's letter. But the, any future phases are not, under that resolution were not included. So as I said at the beginning, what we have before us today is simply the park staff, thank you, requesting guidance on a mitigation package to address the severe impacts to those natural resources to which this commission is the steward. The guidance that we will provide today will help frame an M O U to be negotiated. I'm still not committing, but I want to make it clear that with all of the other issues unaddressed from the very beginning, I am not committed to approving the actual conveyance of parkland without resolution of the other concerns with this project that have gone unanswered. I would like to acknowledge that much of what the state has offered in the parkland mitigation package does provide improvement to our environment. For example, it includes many stormwater management improvements, long-needed repair to crumbling infrastructure by way of failing culverts, including the bridge, including the bridge over Tuckerman Lane to Tilden Woods will improve the quality of Old Farm Creek, provide much-needed wildlife passage and accommodate pedestrians and cyclists. And I want to commend the park staff for the incredible job they have done to protect our resources and hold the state's feet to the fire. I know this will continue as the burden increases and the develop, with the developer as the project gels. So now I'm going to get off of my soapbox and address several of my concerns with the staff presentation and the issues that have been raised. Our pros plan policy allows conveyance of parkland for non-park use after consideration of avoidance minimization and then conveyance if the need is unavoidable. I posit that this mitigation plan is about reaching that point. It can be said that a change of use in parkland to transportation-related uses is unavoidable in the context of M D O T S H A's managed lanes project, but that does not mean it serves a greater public interest as you all have indicated in the staff report. It simply indicates that there is a transportation-related need that is unavoidable to parkland resources because of the managed lane, of the, of the managed lane alignment that they have selected. And I want the language about it being a greater public interest removed from anything because it isn't necessarily a greater public interest. The overall project impacts as outlined on page six are incredibly harmful to our environment and I want that, I want that emphasized in any way possible. Discussion of temporary impacts is a misleading term. The impacts are permanent. The need for construction access is temporary. We will get some of our parkland back, but it will not be in the same condition that has taken a lifetime or more to reach. Any substitution of parkland that is not specifically included in this package must be subject to commission approval. Actually, what I'd really like is to be part of the team that negotiates the M O U on behalf of the commission, so I would ask that the, the chair indulge me in that if possible. You don't have to make a decision right now. Since I have a very deep knowledge of and history of this project and I understand the means under which S H A generally operates. So I look forward to some meaningful public engagement during the mandatory referral review of the rod, and these are all things that will be mentioned at that time. Thank you.
I just, just want to note, Commissioner Rubin, we are not here to determine whether this project is in the greater public interest. So it is, you know, we are asking you to approve this if you feel that this is, this project is in the greater public interest. We have worked to minimize, avoid to this point, to get to a point where if this preferred alternative is selected and determined to be in, in the public's interest, that this is the minimum amount of parkland that would be needed and the mitigation package associated with it would be representative of that loss.
I, I guess it's, the point is that I have a hard time saying that a transportation project to expand roads, I, I find that hard to be a greater public interest. I use those three words, a greater public interest than protection of our natural resources. That's what I'm saying. You know, I think that the project has a public need, a project, a transportation project. I just have a hard time with those, with that term. That's what I was saying.
Well, I, look, I don't really like this project, so I'm not here to defend it, but we negotiated agreement with S H A that basically contemplated that we are going to agree that this is sufficient. So, I mean, if you want to put it in the box of the test that's in the policy for parks, then I think I have no trouble finding that it is a greater public good, not because I personally think a road is better than a park or the natural resources that are at stake, but because five members of the county council said so. If they want to change their mind or if there's new governor and they want to do some different project or no project at all, I'm not going to stand in the way of that, but I don't, I would be cautious about saying things like, we conclude, we are not ready to conclude this is a greater public good. In my view, that's been decided for us by elected officials and we have to just sort of operate within that framework. But, and I also just think that in terms of the way that we negotiated this and you were there, I was there and, yeah, up in Baltimore, that we agreed in good faith not to, you know, use the parkland mitigation aspects of this project to try to hinder or delay the project. I just want to make it crystal clear that I fully intend, and I think we fully intend to follow through on that, and that's really not, neither here nor there as far as whether any of us individually like the project, would support the project if we were the ones that were in a position to decide or for that matter, you know, any of the particulars you named, I don't, it's not that I disagree with any of them, but I just think for today it's enough to just say, as far as parkland impact, this is a fair, this is. it's enough to just say, as far as parkland impact, this is a fair, this is a fair trade. It's a good deal for parks. It does address the natural resource impacts. It also gets us some really important parcels, particularly off 16th Street and that Northwood parcel, that we would not have been able to obtain in intensively developed areas are going to be very useful. And I just, all I'm saying is not that I disagree with anything you said, but I just think today maybe less is more in terms of making any conclusions about anything else about the project, other than simply for parkland mitigation, this is, I think this satisfies our policy.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, that's really what I was saying. I don't think I was saying anything different. I was saying that for purpose of today and for the mitigation package, I thought it, I think it's a fair deal. But I just, I just don't want the rest to be forgotten, and this is also a meeting, it's a public meeting, and people are going to be hearing us, and I wanted to be crystal clear about what the other issues are and that they've not been resolved. And so I really, that's, that's really what I wanted to do, is put that on the table. I have no intention of going against the agreement that we've negotiated in terms of the mitigation. I think it's a fair mitigation package. I just, I just don't like the terminology, if you would, and that's, that's my, you know, that goes along with the rest of it. I don't like the terminology. But I have every intention, obviously, of honoring the commitment that I've made, that we made to the state highway with regard to mitigation.
Okay. Well, are there other comments or questions from the board? Would you like a motion to approve the mitigation package and authority to negotiate the MOU? Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, I think we would.
Jerry Sashia, I'd make that motion to accept what you've recommended, to that we highlight those elements in protecting the parks.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you next week on this.
Okay, we are now ready to talk about ZTA 20202, Density and Height Limits, and Parking for Bio-Health Priority Campuses, with Ben Berbert.
Thank you for that. For the record, Ben Berbert with the Countywide Planning and Policy Team, and as Chair Anderson said, I'm here presenting some recommendations on ZTA 2202. I'll get into a little bit of behind this recommendation as we get through the presentation, but basically, staff is not recommending that the board support ZTA 2202 as it was introduced on March 15, 2022. However, staff is recommending supporting a modified version of ZTA 2202, which was released and circulated back on May 26, 2022, with a few additional minor modifications that we would make kind of to that modified draft that came out. And so what I'm going to do here in this presentation is I'm going to kind of walk through both. I'm going to walk through the version that we received in March, just because that is the official ZTA that is on record, and explain some of the concerns staff had with that. And then I'm going to walk through what is in this modified draft that was circulated to us, that we are under the full faith that it will be sort of discussed at the Fed Work Session, and this is all to transmit comments for a June 14 Council Public Hearing on this issue. So again, 2202 was first introduced March 15 of 2022 by Councilmember Friedson's office. It was cosponsored by Council President Albernus, Vice President Glass, as well as Councilmembers Hucker, Katz, Navarro, and Reamer. The intent statement, and I have no reason to disregard that, is that this is to provide flexibility for urban biohealth uses, including more flexible parking standards and provisions for achieving additional building heights and flexibility. The following changes that were in the presented 2202 included a new subsection on parking that is part of the biohealth priority campus use under the office and medical use, mainly dealing with waivers that the ZTA was recommending for biohealth uses. There was also the addition of new parking minimums and maximums for the biohealth priority campus use in the parking calculation table back in Division 6.2 of the code. And then in both the CR and the employment zones, under their density and height allocation subsections, there was new provisions that were added to allow for increased building heights under certain circumstances, as well as the reallocation of any mapped residential FAR to be converted to a mapped commercial FAR, so long as the total FAR on the site were to remain at or below the actual mapped total. Looking at the parking waivers that were discussed first, there were a couple of waivers in there. One would be to allow fewer than the required parking spaces in a parking lot district. The sort of next clause was to allow to have more than the maximum amount of parking spaces in a parking lot district. And then it basically was creating a waiver inside of this subsection to allow these sections to be waived by the deciding body, which would be the planning board. These waivers are pretty duplicative. There's already a parking waiver section in the parking code. The only thing that's actually exempt from being waived by that section is the parking lot district, which is actually what these are talking about. The, the intent just doesn't really seem clear to staff, and so staff would not recommend that any of these parking waivers move forward if this version of the ZTA actually moves forward. The next thing to talk about, again, Section 624B is the very large table of all the parking standards in the code. The ZTA would add a new use for biohealth priority campus, and it would set it at the same parking minimums and maximums as currently in the table for the life science and research and development. We don't have an issue with this. This is setting logical parking standards for a new use that was created by a prior ZTA. So we do not have any, any recommendations to change that. Again, the biggest thing that the ZTA did is creating those new sections in both the commercial residential as well as the employment zones, talking about how to change building heights as well as the FAR allocations. The first sort of clause in that was the locational clause. This is very similar to where the biohealth priority campus uses are allowed currently. So it would be for any use that is a life science, research and development, or medical and scientific manufacturing use, within or adjacent to red policy areas or within a half mile of a planned or existing BRT route, including the CCT. I do know the concept of the CCT is also something that has just changed. This was brought up by staff with the council staff, and it's determined that because this is used in other places in the code, they would keep it this way for now, and we'll just have a ZTA that finds and replaces any reference to CCT once we figure out what exactly that reference wants to be. So I'm going to take their lead, and we'll recommend leaving that language for now. For increasing building heights, the introduced ZTA said that sites that were mapped at under 100 feet in height could be approved by the board for up to two times that height, which would be up to 200 feet, if they're doing one of the allowed uses listed above, and that sites that were mapped at between 100 and 200 feet could have a height increase of up to one and a half times that height. That's probably the biggest concern staff had with, with this entire ZTA is really this issue right here. There's a lot of problems that come with it, not to mention compatibility issues of increasing building heights so substantially, particularly allowing the bigger increase in height to the lower mapped height buildings. There's also just a lot of concern about how do you define the use that goes into this building that is even eligible for these mapped heights? This, this was a very problematic section of the code for staff. Other things that are changed in the subsection would be, as I mentioned before, being able to convert unused residential FAR to commercial FAR so long as the total FAR is at or below the mapped FAR for the site. There was also then a provision that was in here saying that these subsections above can supersede if there is an overlay zone that has more restrictive requirements. That was another big red flag for staff, that you'd be, you know, a lot of the overlays aren't requirements are there to help with density, with compatibility, and with other very carefully planned things through our master plans. And it just seemed very concerning that this ZTA with this sort of text change would allow a wholesale sort of ignoring of some of those recommendations. Thankfully, staff was able to reach out with the council staff, both, you know, their technical staff, as well as the staff of Friedson's office, and shared some of these concerns. We had some negotiations, and they were able to release a, basically a revised version of this ZTA that was circulated on May 26, 2022, and it was included in the staff packet. The intent was to introduce this at the Fed Work Session as a major discussion item to see if there was interest in Fed to sort of take that version of the ZTA up instead of the one that's been officially introduced. And a lot of the changes that are in there reflect, I think, in very good faith, a lot of the concerns that we had initially raised. And so I'm now going to walk through what is actually in this draft version, and with the mindset that staff is, is pretty supportive of these changes. The first major change is that whole section on parking and all of the waivers, they're just proposing to remove it from the ZTA. You know, I think there was an agreement that this was just a little, little complicated and a little unnecessary. With that, they also did remove the section of the ZTA that was adding the biohealth priority campus use to the vehicle parking table. You know, staff didn't have an issue with that. I don't think we have an issue if they also don't want to introduce it anymore. So I think we're, we're pretty neutral on that change. Big changes around the density and height provisions. They were previously located in a section of both the CR and the employment zones that specifically dealt with density and height. There's been a choice now to actually move these to the section of code that talks about the MPDU Optional Method Development Standards for the CR family of zones, as well as the employment zones. Again, I don't think we have a strong opinion either way where those provisions go. They work in either place, and so we are fine leaving them where they're now being proposed. The geography would be the same as before, red policy areas or adjacent or half mile from, from a BRT. Couple of things of note here, the life sciences use was dropped from the list of allowed uses. With the modified ZTA, I'm not really sure why that was done. It seems not completely logical, given the, the point of the ZTA to remove that use. So we're actually recommending that use be added back into the list of uses here. And this is probably the main change staff actually would recommend to the ZTA was just making sure life sciences are included here. A lot of the actual details of the density and height provisions A lot of the actual details of the density and height provisions were also changed, and I would say for the better. A new provision that was added is that the, any increase in height is limited to sites with frontage on a street classified as an arterial or higher. I think this is seen as an improvement, because usually our arterials are higher, are pretty major thoroughfares, and it's much less intrusive to have, you know, maybe some slightly higher building heights in these areas, as opposed to residential areas. And kind of in conjunction with that, there's now a new provision proposed that a site receiving height increases may not abut or confront property in agricultural, rural, residential detached, or residential townhouse zones that are vacant or improved with residential uses. This is very similar to the definition of where the compatibility standards apply when you're in a CR zone versus adjacent to a residential zone. So that kind of confusing section of code here is already in practice. And again, this goes a pretty long way, we think, in allaying some of the concerns that we had about, you know, a large increase in building heights, right adjacent to residential areas, because there are a number of places where the CR zone stops and the R60 zone picks up without much of a transition. Provisions to use additional height also require applications must achieve public benefit points through their review of site plan under the adaptive buildings category. This is a category that specifically creates different standards for higher height floor plates, as well as designed internal systems, to make it easier to switch between users. Sort of making a all-user shell of a building. It's not something we see used very often, and so it's something that they're recommending here as a requirement. Another big change, height increases now would only be eligible for properties that are 100 feet or less at their mapped height, and that that increase would only be 1.5 times, instead of two times, the original height. This was a compromise that they were comfortable doing, because a new provision is being added, creating a new concept called height averaging. We currently have height averaging in the code, but it is currently utilized by sort of a single building, can kind of have different height elevations within the building, and you can average each of those parts of the building together into an average height, and that average height just needs to then meet the mapped height. This is kind of taking that same concept, but it's taking it at a site level. And so you could maybe have a couple of buildings a little taller than mapped, a couple a little shorter, as long as the average of all of those meet that average, or that average meets the mapped height. That is flexibility that's being proposed in here, which, you know, in the idea of providing flexibility for these users, staff finds this, you know, an acceptable compromise to add, particularly because you're not adding new bulk on the site. You're taking the same bulk that was already mapped, and you're just moving it around on the site and how it's used. And this includes any possible split zone properties, which could be as nuanced as just different mapped heights, but in the same CR zone. So again, staff does support these new provisions as a good compromise in making the ZTA better, while still providing flexibility for these users. Again, looking at compatibility with the arterial roads, not adjacent to residential buildings, as well as the creative approaches by looking at height averaging to provide some of this needed flexibility. There is an RESJ, racial equity social justice statement, that was provided for this ZTA, but it was provided based on the draft of the ZTA that was circulated back in March of 2022, and has not been updated to reflect the draft that was circulated in May. So that RESJ statement, based on the original submittal, was very similar to the one that was released for 2109, which was the biohealth priority campus, and basically stating that the same concerns are there, that the biohealth industry as a whole, in their opinion, sort of lags a little bit in diversity, and there are some recommendations of things the county could do to sort of help fix that gap, that doesn't necessarily fix the ZTA itself, but other policy issues that could be looked at. So in conclusion, I think what staff is looking for is for the board to agree that they do not support the ZTA as it was introduced, and instead are much more supportive of the modified ZTA that was circulated a couple of weeks ago, with the addition of our recommendation that life sciences be added back to the list of allowed uses. I know that was a lot, a little confusing, so I'm going to end the presentation here, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? Oh, I'm sorry, we have a couple speakers. Doug Firstenberg is here. And Bob Dalrymple maybe is online, but I'm not sure. Mr. Dalrymple, are you there, somewhere?
Yes, I'm here. I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, why don't you go first, since you're online?
I think Doug wants to go first, and since he pays me, I'm going to listen to him.
That seems like a good choice.
The chairman tells you to go first, Bob. Do what the chairman tells you.
Well, you're, whatever you want to do, Doug.
Okay. Doug Firstenberg, Stonebridge, for the record. We appreciate staff's work on this. We were part of the initial spur to action on the ZTA, and what we're interested is what's in the modified ZTA. As many of you know, we're very interested in creating urban bio in the county, and the two things that we really want that are in the ZTA allow us to do that. First, the ability to take all the density on the site and put it into a single use, which is very similar, you know, in your Bethesda plan, and now your new Silver Spring plan. So allowing us to, you know, do all commercial is important, because the life sciences industry likes to cluster. So the more we can put them together, the more successful we will be. And second, the issue with life sciences is the floor-to-floor heights. You know, our entire focus at Stonebridge is on purpose-built labs, new lab construction. They really want 16 feet floor-to-floor to be able to drive the kind of uses that they have, and the adjustment in the heights here will allow us to do that. And so we're fully supportive of the modified ZTA, fully supportive of staff comments, and happy to answer any questions, and hopefully get your support, so we can move this forward and bring more life sciences, in particular, in North Bethesda, where we have a site that we're going to advance, that was formerly residential. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Dalrymple, do you want to add anything to that?
Yes, please. Good afternoon. Bob Dalrymple with the firm of Selzer-Gervich. I'm here speaking on behalf of Stonebridge as well. You've had other ZTA's before you, as you know, that have addressed biocampus, and speed to market, and the such. This one is addressed to further entice good bioscience tenants to come to our red policy areas, and is cleaning up some things that otherwise have not been addressed yet. The original ZTA, as Doug mentioned, was targeting a different situation than what we were trying to address, and I, our understanding is that that has been addressed in other ways. So we're fully supportive of the amended zoning text amendment. We have worked with your staff and with council staff closely on this, and just yesterday we received yet another version of the ZTA, which was sent to us by council staff and the legislation sponsor. We sent over a letter yesterday afternoon to you, which you should be in receipt of, which summarizes those changes and provides you with the version of the ZTA that will be introduced to the Fed Committee when it is taken up in work session. Essentially, it addresses two areas, and is more of a clarification and technical changes, I think. The first one is to make it clear that the 1.5 multiplier can be on either the mapped height or on the averaged height. And that's an important nuance, because in order for us to get to the height that we need, we need to use the averaged height times 1.5. And the sponsor is fine with that, as is legislative council. The second change is just a technical change. It relates to how you go about height averaging, and it applies, we just changed it from site area to tract area, which is the way that density is measured as well, and so we would like to be able to measure the height for height averaging in that same fashion. So I wanted to make sure you were aware of these further changes that are going to be before the council. I think they are just nuances to what was presented to you by your staff today, and with that, we ask for your support, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
Jerry Sishy, a couple of comments. I think I mentioned last session about enjoying Journal Square in Jersey City, but the other thing that was most impressive there was the medical center they had, which were two buildings that seemed to exceed the general height in the area. So again, looking at what happens in Virginia, attracting development, in this case, we want to be strong in the health area. So on occasion, you know, landmark building that kind of is a focus point, I think helps the development. When we were pretty much level, one or two-story homes, I think that's changing a bit in the county. Again, my earlier comments about, you know, the LabQuest area in 29, looking at that as a potential. We talked about that, we visited the Great Seneca area, and my comment was, if you want to extend a transit line, maybe that's a good place to extend it out 370, and then over to that area. So again, I think a focus that maybe additional height can give to an area, if it's on the top of a residential building, I can understand the objection, but just to give it some pizzazz, which even downtown Jersey City did, they did a lot of high-rise buildings that they had across in Manhattan. So, you know, I think some flexibility, and I think it focuses on, you know, some of the issues we have and interest in medical research in the county. So just, you know, I think it would be a good visual site in some cases.
Mr. Berbert, the modifications that Mr. Dalrymple mentioned, are you aware of them, and do you have any analysis on them? Are you on board with them, or anything that we should be aware of?
So I am aware that there was further conversation, even since the 26th, about whether or not, I think the intent always was to allow the multiplier of 1.5 to apply either, you know, pre or post averaging. And I know multiple parties kind of read the draft and thought that might have been missing. My initial comments didn't really opine on it, because I think we're fine, you know, whether or not that's, you know, sort of part of it. But I don't necessarily have an issue either with the changes. I didn't actually realize a new draft had gone out. I don't think I've seen it, but I've read what's here, and it looks like what I think was, we talked about in a meeting that we had last week. So I don't have an issue with this.
Okay, that's what I wanted to find out, if you had an issue with what was being, I'm calling it the June 8th version. Regarding the life sciences, I concur with what you've presented, but I guess, one of my questions to you, well, two questions. One, do you anticipate that there would be pushback from the Fed Committee or the council in general regarding reinserting life sciences? Like you, I don't understand the difference, and for those who are in that space, the term is often used interchangeably, although life sciences usually means something very specific, but I'll pause and hear what you have to say.
I could think of absolutely no reason why it wasn't carried forward, other than a clerical error, to be honest, because it, you know, this, it was sort of mentioned, the intent of this ZTA was to provide some flexibility for basically the same uses that are otherwise considered a biohealth priority campus, but don't meet that criteria, because they're not meeting the size threshold, would really be the main difference, and/or this would allow some flexibility for spec development, whereas the biohealth priority campus were requiring a sort of signed-on tenant to go in with it. So it seems it would make the most sense to have these definitions match in the list of uses that are allowed to take advantage of any new procedures we come up with. So I can't see why life sciences was removed, and think it should go back.
Could I speak to that?
Absolutely.
Because I do have a little bit of information to share, which is, we also asked the question of council staff, both the sponsor and legislative council, as to whether we should be including that in this latest version. And they do have reasons why they don't want it included, and I don't want to speak for them, but I'll try to summarize what my understanding is, which is that they, that the priority with the sponsors introduced ZTA, and as amended, was to target as the primary use, the research and development aspects of a bioscience tenant, and that they felt like the life science was a little too broad in general, and was getting away from the types of users they had in mind. So I just wanted to let you know that I think that it was intentional, and I don't think that they're planning on recommending to Fed Committee that it be added in. Frankly, we would have no problem with it, but we will go with what the sponsor wants to present.
Thank you, Mr. Dalrymple. And Debbie Director, I take it you have something to say as well?
I do. Robert Cronenberg, for the record. And Ben and I had a conversation about this. When you read the definition of research and development, it includes life sciences. So I think one way or another, it's probably covered, but it just seems like it would be, from a clarity standpoint, to include life sciences in there, so it covers all aspects of biohealth. And so I think that was our position early on, and we still feel like that should go in. So I would completely agree with Ben, and include that in the definition, and in the uses. One way or another, though, I think it's already included, depending on which use you use.
I think on some of these fine points, it's really not necessary even helpful for the board to try to take a position at this point. I think we just get to Fed, and, you know, everybody's aware that there's some of these little wrinkles. So I would just, I would suggest we should just not mess with it right now. That's just my take. I would be happy to just support the second version of the ZTA and leave it at that, and then obviously we'll have some further discussion as this gets to the council.
Yeah, I agree. And with that, I'd like to extend my support for the revised ZTA. It sounds like even the industry is happy with it, and I think it's a win. And I'm glad we were able to coordinate with the county council, and this is a great example of collaboration. So with that, I'll extend my support. I can make a motion as well, but...
Please.
So I'll make a motion to recommend the revised ZTA and transmit comments to the county council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much for your support.
That's it for the day.
Thank you.